We have our principal Kate Boynton here to present the RMHS Student Handbook for approval. We also have a special guest, Mrs. Dorothy Presser from the NASC, who will do basically a workshop with us. One of the things that we try to do as a school committee periodically is sort of do some things that can help us function better as a whole school committee to do our job and execute our roles and responsibilities as elected officials. So she's here tonight to do that and we're, as part of that, we're gonna go over our school committee protocol, which we last looked at in 2016. We will do a reorganization and we'll be electing a new chair and vice chair. And there are some community letters in the information section. And we are introducing at some point two new staff members tonight as well, two new administrators. So I'm gonna get started. Actually, what I wanted to just briefly make a statement. So on July 1st, a letter did go out to the Reading School staff and community. And I wanna thank the administrators who worked on that. Gail Dowd, Chris Kelly, Jen Sties, and Jen Bovey. J E N N and J E N N.
Yes.
And also thank the principals who have been here this summer for then subsequently meeting with us after that letter went out. Really just to let people know that Dr. Doherty is on a leave of absence for family and personal reasons. And in this time period while he's out, we have an amazing staff, actually. And the first person on the list is Mrs. Linda Engelson, who is like the glue that holds us all together, including the school committee. And so it was made clear in the memo that if parents have questions, you know, Linda Engelson is sort of the first line to start any triage that's needed. And then we have Gail Dowd, our CFO, Chris Kelly, our Assistant Superintendent, Jen Sties, our new Director of Student Services, Jen Bovey, who's here, our Human Resources Administrator. And then I think Chris was gonna introduce another administrator who just joined us. But that, what we will do is keep the community updated as we get information, have any more information in regards to Dr. Doherty's leave. But I'm really confident that the team that is here and in place is well situated to do the things that need to be done to be ready for students again in late August. So we'll graciously give Dr. Doherty the time that he needs to attend to his matters. So I just wanted to put that out there. And if there's any public comment for items not on the agenda. Okay. Then we have a consent agenda, as I said, with a donation in the minutes. Dr. Boxer, do you wanna just give us the motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded by Mr. Wise. And all those in favor? And the motion carries six zero. So we'll do reports. We always start with our student, who I wasn't expecting tonight. Thank you for being here this summer. Excellent, Mara.
Oh, there's no report to give 'cause school's out, so there's really nothing going on with students. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you for coming. I'm sure the students are all very busy.
Sleeping in.
Sleeping in, getting ready for a late start and hopefully rejuvenating. So not getting more tired, hopefully.
Yeah.
Great. Well, thank you for being here tonight. It's a busy agenda. Now, we have, actually, we start off, I'm not sure which order you guys wanna go, but Ms. Dowd or Mrs. Sties?
Sure. I don't know what I'm doing.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, just an introduction. Hi, I'm Jennifer Sties. I'm the new Director of Student Support.
Great. And just started on July 1st.
July 1st. Just started on July 1st, yes.
Excellent.
I say I...
You have no report?
I have no report. I think I covered all of my items a week ago.
I do have a few things. So first of all, welcome, Jen.
Thank you.
She's already been a wonderful addition here. She's been over at our extended year program quite a bit in keeping Gail and I in constant communication. So I can already tell that we're just gonna be such a wonderful, powerful team. She brings a lot of knowledge, a lot of really finite attention to detail, I can already tell. And most of all, she brings a great sense of humor and just being like real and fun. And I think that energy is just so contagious, so.
Welcome aboard. Thank you. Everybody's been phenomenal.
She's terrific. So I'm also introducing somebody else to the district tonight that we're excited to have you all meet. I'm gonna actually have Jen Bovey come up and talk a little bit about the process. And then I'll say a few words about our newest member of our leadership team. And then we'll let him speak for himself as well.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Again, Jen Bovey, HR Administrator. I just wanna quickly again go over what our process was in selecting our new Metco Director. So we did get a number of applicants come in, which was great, a good amount, I think roughly about 25. And from there, we selected a nice handful of them to move forward onto our first round of interviewing. At that time, what we did is we brought together our screening committee, which was comprised of administrators from the district, principals, assistant principals, teachers from the district, parents, as well as myself, who was co-chairing along with Assistant Superintendent Chris Kelly. So from there, we chose another number, a smaller number, to move forward to our second round. At that time, we did sit down in a much more intimate circle to go through interviewing along with myself, again, Chris Kelly, we had Principal Julia Hendricks, we had a rep from Metco Inc. with us, along with Superintendent Doherty. So from there, we were able to make a final decision for someone that we're very, very, very excited to bring on, new to the team. And I'll kick it back to Chris to kinda move forward and then he'll come on up and say some words.
So thank you to Jen. She does such a great job of really, so many of the details that it takes to do an administrative search just are so seamless, working with her. So thank you, Jen, for that. So when we got to the point of where do we wanna hire, this person, Grant, his name is Grant Hightower, he's gonna introduce himself in a minute, it just, he just really struck all of us as really a great fit. We've been very lucky with Jason Cross. Today was Jason's last day and I know Grant and he have already connected many times and will connect. We wish Jason the best of luck in his next endeavor in the nonprofit world. And we know he's still gonna be a great friend to Reading. He's still a Reading parent. So it's so exciting to us that we get the benefit of Jason Cross in our lives. And yet, we have somebody awesome that we're bringing on that Jason already feels so strongly about as well. So before I introduce Grant, and he can tell a little bit about his bio, I just wanna thank the team that did, the screening team was very complete and they spent a whole summer day, nine interviews. We were there all day, from early in the morning to late in the afternoon. And we really went through all of it. So I just wanna say who they were and thank them publicly. They may not be watching, but obviously, as Jen said, we co-chaired, we had three administrators on the team. Kate Boynton, who's here tonight, Lisa Marie Ippolito, the Joshua Eaton Principal, Brendan Norton, Parker Middle School Assistant Principal, Jennifer Blackmon, she's a Parker Middle School teacher, outstanding educators helped us, Sharon Burke, RMHS Librarian, Jessica Lozey, Coolidge Middle School, phenomenal, I just met her, really good person, Lisa Connell, parent, Lavonda Epps, parent, Sherella Lestrade, parents, and Gina McCormick, parent. So we had such a great team, so many great conversations. And Jen and I really enjoyed getting to know some people that we didn't really know well, especially the parents. And I, everyone felt really strong about Grant Hightower as our new Metco Director. So without any further ado, I'm gonna present Grant and let him introduce himself. If you have any questions for him, absolutely fire him away. Grant?
Yeah, no problem. So thank you, thank everybody, you know, first for welcoming me to, welcoming me to the Reading family. I definitely wanna thank Chris and Jen for making the intake process really, really warm. I really, it was a really, really quick turnaround from the end of the school year in my last district to now. And so you guys made it really, really seamless and I appreciate that opportunity. Just a little bit about me, 34-year-old, husband and father of, husband, father of four, not husband of four. Father of four kids. And I'm coming from the Wellesley School District. I was there for just under 10 years. I started off as a special ed TA and then I left and ran two group homes in Boston for two years and then I returned to Wellesley and I was there as the Metco Coordinator. I was really integral in changing their curriculum around equity, built a course called Diverse American Voices and co-taught that with our English Department. And we tripled our enrollment in two years. It was a course where kids really wanted to speak. I helped organize a sit-in and walk-out for our students of color and our allies who really wanted to try to make a statement after some really, really tough racial threats and different incidents. So that was really a big part of my job there, was trying to give kids voice. And so I really hope that I have the opportunity to come to Reading and give all of our students, not just our students of color, but all of our students, an opportunity to voice who they are and what they want. I think that any change that's gonna come really does start at the student level. And I think that we're here to guide them. And so that's really been kind of my biggest passion, is just being as big and as consistent of allies I possibly can. And so I just wanna be able to come here and do that for all the schools, all the administrators, all the faculty, and really just make this a home. So thank you guys again for welcoming me in and I hope to make everybody proud. So thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Hightower. Do you have any questions for Grant? Comments?
All right.
Appreciate you coming. Do you wanna say something? Coming out on, this is your summer vacation, I guess, maybe. But appreciated. I know everyone's here today and hadn't thought about it, but, so thank you.
Dr. Boxer?
I just wanted to say how excited I am to have you here and how impressed I am. I've been meeting with parents who are on the screening committee and no one mentioned a word, so, which they're not supposed to do.
Fair.
So I'm very impressed with the confidentiality and I just needed to...
Thanks, Jen.
Quite impressive. And I also wanted to formally invite you, not as a school committee member, but as a volunteer, to the Metco pool party and barbecue that will be on Friday, August 23rd.
Sounds good.
My husband in my home. And there will be an announcement coming out through the schools to invite all the families also and the staff to that event. But we really look forward to you joining us.
You cooking?
Welcome aboard.
Right now, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Grant. Talk to you soon.
See you guys soon. Thank you.
I don't have any further reports. Okay. Do we have any community members who have reports, liaison reports? I don't think so, 'cause, do we have any meetings in between?
RACASA needed to catch up.
Okay, great. Okay.
So RACASA has been very busy, actually. They, in the spring, they honored Mason Haynes at the Senior Awards Ceremony for their outstanding youth leader of 2019 and gave him a $100 scholarship. He went above and beyond doing both outreach on vaping and sharing his, with the middle schools, and sharing his experience personally at having been caught vaping and going through the Chemical Health Intervention Program. And I won't go through at length, but his story's quite poignant and he shared it. And in the process, he really touched some of our students who then applied to be RACASA peer leaders. So he really made an impact. He also was part of another, a couple of other programs, a project on healthy relationships, and created a game that taught the middle schoolers about vaping. So he's been very active and really made an impact. RACASA also was present, many of you might've seen them, at the Friends and Family Day, at a Reading Police Open House, and also at the Beat Heart Foundation's Jams for Jake. And they said that the opioid and the vaping resources were a very, maybe I should say unfortunately, popular resource, but that they have been really working hard to get the information out there. And in addition, Erica McNamara, SRO Brian Lewis, and SRO Matt Vacher visited the ninth grade health classes, some of the math, ninth grade health classes, to conduct opioid prevention workshops. They also worked with Dowd Pediatrics at the library, doing another project for providers and nurses, featuring Dr. Nicholas Chatty, pediatrician specializing in adolescent health and addiction. The event was taped and will be shared with other medical providers. They're still looking for their outreach coordinator, so you can find that link on the page. And the next RACASA board meeting will be held on August 28th at 5:30 PM at the Reading Police Department. Thank you. There was a lot to catch up on.
I actually have two quick reports on HTRAC and the ADHOC. So the ADHOC Committee on the Human Rights, ADHOC Group to Develop an Approach to Human Rights Committee, actually canceled the meetings that were scheduled on July 1st and July 15th due to lack of a quorum. Should also note that Assistant Superintendent Kelly is the, I think the select board made that official.
They voted that Tuesday night, yes.
That she will, Assistant Superintendent Kelly will take Dr. Doherty's place while he is out on leave on that. So I think the next meeting is either like the 22nd or the 29th.
The 5th, actually.
Oh.
It's the first Monday, I think it's first and third Mondays. So I got confused on that, too. So it's the first Monday in August.
So anyway, it's something, I thought we were meeting twice a month, so it would be better if it was once a month. But anyway, they, we had to cancel those meetings. The HTRAC did meet last night. We had been working with the Clergy Association to try to do a July picnic at Memorial Park, but HTRAC is having trouble getting members to attend and participation. It's very, there's not really, not enough people on the board to actually do any real work. And so we basically said that we couldn't really participate with the Clergy Association. I'm not exactly sure if the Clergy Association is gonna still have the picnic at Memorial Park or not, but I'm sure that they will get something out, like through the town website. So I know that these organizations in town are looking, as are most of the volunteer organizations, looking for people to continue to step up. So that's the only report there. Okay, so if we're all done with reports, we're all set, then we'll go into new business, which the first item on the agenda is the approval of the RMHS Student Handbook. And I believe Principal Boynton has a summary for us that she's gonna present, or walk us through. And it's in our packet, I know.
Thank you, everybody, and thanks for having me. So in your packet, you should have, I'm not sure if you have the entirety of the handbook, which is over 100 pages. And at the top is a two-page change memo that outlines really the very minor changes that went into the handbook this year. So what I can do is just walk you through, and I wanna just point out one thing that I noticed on the memo, is that the date should read 2019, not 2018, so please make that change.
Oh, July 18.
July 18, 2019, it said 2018. So one of the biggest things that you'll notice if you look at the old handbook to the new handbook is that it's, there's a structural makeover. And the structural makeover includes the addition of major subsections. So when looking at the handbook, there were really just a list of items and topics with no clear organization to it. And so what we did was to just create subsections that made sense and fit the information into those subsections. So that it's academic information, information about student life, information about the code of conduct, information about student supports, so that the handbook is much more readily accessible and easier to read for students, who are the primary audience, as well as their families and caregivers. And the table of contents is a little bit more user-friendly as well, with linkable, sort of linkable items and subsections. So there were no policy changes to this year's handbook in any way, shape, or form. The other major updates, in addition to the subsection titles, were updates to the bell schedule that is based around and reflects the changes in school committee policy regarding the high schools' hours, removing to a later start, therefore the bell schedules needed to be changed. Any personnel name changes, and I think there really are only two, Jennifer Stice is in there, replacing Carolyn Wilson, and Mr. McSweeney, we have a to-be-determined, so Mr. McSweeney is no longer the Assistant Principal or will be leaving the Assistant Principalship to go back to the classroom here. And so we're in the midst of a search for a new Assistant Principal, so that new name will come in. I think those are the only two name changes. The Assistant Principal grade caseloads, our Assistant Principals follow the grades up, so that requires change naturally. Just Carol last year was nine and 11, next year she'll be 10 and 12, incoming Assistant Principal will be nine and 11, and so on and so forth. The grading system, it came to my attention through some parent members in our PTO and school council, that the section regarding attitude and effort grades, that Reading Memorial High School has not given those for many, 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 many years. And they remained in the handbook long after they were phased out. So those were deleted because they do not reflect current practice in any way, shape, or form. So you'll see those in red in your sections, because we don't give attitude or effort grades. The valedictorian and salutatorian section, because sometimes the GPAs are so close, the handbook originally read that it would, we would choose the valedictorian and salutatorian during third term. However, we have found that because GPAs are so close, that we do need into fourth quarter to make that accurate determination. So that language just clarifies current practice around us needing a little bit more Removing a sort of a value-added phrase under incomplete grades, we really look to verify reasons, not necessarily good. We just, we verify whether the reason a student is receiving an incomplete is a valid reason and we verify that versus good. Under weighted GPA, changing the word four to multiple, because with the level collapse, not every single class or grade actually has four levels. Some do, some don't. The word multiple encompasses all of that. For our National Honor Society, Jess Bailey, history teacher, has stepped down as advisor. Jessica Schalzy has stepped in as advisor. So there are two co-advisors, still Heather Lombardo, but also with Miss Schalzy, so Miss Schalzy is in there as the new co-advisor. In the attendance subsection, some of the subheadings were a little confusing. So attendance guidelines was changed to reporting a student absent, so that parents know, like, here's where you find the procedures for how to report a student that is absent. Under attendance as well, with the 7:30 start time, 11:00 AM was the cutoff point for students to be here for a full day with the hour change, that would move to 12 o'clock. So that reflects the one-hour late start time at the high school. And that really sums up the changes. So no significant policy changes in any way, shape, or form, reflecting either what has not been longstanding practice at the high school for a very long time, and then changes really related to late start and just a cosmetic makeover. I'm happy to take any questions.
I know, when we referred to that this had been reviewed with the school council?
Yes. And the school council, in our very last meeting of the school year in June, decided and voted really unanimously to take a really deep dive into the handbook beginning next year. This might be a multi-year process, because there is a lot to look at. And the handbook has not had a really significant deep dive in a number of years. And so we agreed, as a school council, sort of newly reconstituted, we had three parent members leave, and so there was a, and we have some new faculty members as well, so we're now a much more robust group than we have been. And we voted to really begin to take a deep dive into the handbook beginning next year.
Right. I understand also the school council has been very focused on some of the NEAS stuff.
NEAS, yes, yes.
So that this was basically the agreement to allow, to do the cosmetic pieces and the organizational formatting and really work on the content next year.
Beginning next year, because I really do believe it's a multi-year process. We'll have to go sort of section by section, because it's, the document itself is over 100 pages, which is really quite unwieldy. And so we wanna make sure that we are really doing things in a systematic way. And we could certainly break up, you know, the process hasn't been decided yet, whether we break off into subcommittees, looking at sections, but I really wanna make sure that we don't rush to any changes and that we're taking things section by section, really methodically and systematically, beginning next year. And also, you know, getting, the school council is representative of stakeholders, but we do have to include additional staff, you know, say we look at attendance, I think that's a whole other, you know, looking at stakeholder input in addition to school council. So methodical and systematic look at the handbook beginning next year.
Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, I don't have a question, I just comment. We look at this every year and I just wanna say, I really appreciate the white paper outlining, you know, I don't think we've ever had that, so.
That's great.
Thank you. That's a process that I took from my prior district, which I think I find very, very helpful, outlining the section where the change is, what's happening, whether it's added, deleted, and the rationale for that.
Mr. Wise?
So some of this, you may say, we're gonna do that next year. But I did go through it, since it's my first time going through it in detail, and since I have a child going into it next year as well, I need to know it as a parent. Quite a few, some of this is minor, so you can take it for what it is. And I have an email I can send to you, if given permission, and all that kind of fun stuff.
I think we should do it in our public session.
Okay. So then, first is, in Section 3, Part M, the Sentry Club, you still have a reference to effort marks. That's the only place I saw effort marks left in the document.
Thank you.
So that can be struck appropriately to make sure that that's not recommended there as well. This next one is a little bit more, wording is the right way to say it, and maybe Ms. Stice can help you with it, I think. But Section 4, Part D, Services and Accommodations for Students with Disabilities, the paragraph about FAP just doesn't read right, and I don't think it's technically correct either.
Yeah, so those are definitely things that we're gonna be looking at, since I didn't write any of this.
Yeah.
And so I would really like Ms. Stice's point of view in terms of what regarding services for students actually belongs in the handbook.
Yeah.
Because I think there's a lot here that potentially doesn't belong in the handbook. So I'm looking, you know, to seek her guidance for that.
Yeah. So my, I mean, as I read through it, it says FAP comes from, you know, the 504, which it comes, it really actually comes from IDA and 504 regulation supports it as well, but that's another story for another day.
I think that this is the kind of thing that you're talking about would be done next year, though.
Yep. And that, I think, is okay, it just reads funny. The tardiness policy on Section 7, Part G, there's still a bulletin that says nodding class by 7:30 AM, which was one minor change that was missed in the 8:30 AM adjustments. Section 8, Part D, there's the eighth point there, and it refers to the harassment policy when it's talking about how you can treat other students. And I think it probably also needs to refer to the bullying policy. In particular, if you read it, it's very bullying-focused. Harassment is one thing, but it's also very bullying-focused.
That's not something that I will change this year. I would like to look at that for next year. And I think with, certainly, school committee and with central administration permission, this is, handbooks really should also be looked at and looked at by our district's legal counsel.
Counsel, yeah.
And so that's something I would like to consult with our legal counsel to make sure that A, we have what we're supposed to have, and B, the wording is appropriate. So again, those are the steps that I would like to begin to take next year.
Yeah, I think that's fine in that case. There's another minor edit there about a comma, space, but that's minor. Then Section 8, Part F, the Student Chemical Health Policies section, this one, I think, is a little bit more substantive in terms of whether or not it has to be done this year or not. As in, I read it, it's out of compliance with the policy that we have already. And I think it gives, and this is what I'd like if somebody knows for sure amongst the committee or amongst the administrative team, it refers things to RACASA, which is not a Reading Public Schools organization, it's its own legal entity.
It's the, I believe it's the diversion program. It's the, I believe it's the diversion program that.
The chemical education program.
Yep, but I'm worried about FERPA in particular, and whether or not we can do that, if we, and technically there's outsourced contract-related stuff, third-party stuff that can fit in there, but if we don't have a contract with RACASA, we might be referring students and violating FERPA by referring them, and I only state that because only recent, I mean, there's a very specific carve-out in college about being able to tell parents, parents, not even anybody else.
Can I just, so the policy is in Appendix K, that's our policy, the regulation.
The school committee policy is full, yes.
The dash R is, is the regulation that was developed consistent with the policy, so which point are you, I just want to make sure that I understand.
So, the first part about the referral to RACASA is not in the dash R or in the policy, and it is sending student records to an outside party. So, if, if we have a contract with outside party as a subcontract and it's covered under that, then okay, I just wanted to make sure that we do and it is covered, otherwise we could be violating FERPA unbeknownst to us.
So I think we can have a legal review.
That might be a table this year that has to be reviewed or.
If there needs to be a legal review, we could talk with legal. Right, before, obviously there's no students in the process right now, so they're, because they're not here, so.
Yep, we'll look into it.
Yep, but then the next part about the regulation, JICHR, which should supersede the handbook as well, the tobacco nicotine use penalties don't perfectly align between the regulation and the.
We absolutely understand that, and again, this is something that we need to reconcile. My assistant principals brought this up because when they go to issue consequences, there are differing consequences.
Yep.
Depending on what you look at, and so this is something 100% that we intend to get legal counsel advice on, and for next year, I think that because of this discrepancy would be a priority for us to take a look at for next year.
All right.
And I'm happy to, if given the permission, seek the advice of our council over the summer.
I think that this would be, we have some policies that we're trying to prioritize with our legal counsel, and there's also a service that MASC provides, that I think that this committee should seriously look at, investing the money and the time into doing it with the MASC. We've always been very, so frugal to the point of maybe not doing what we should do, so the combination, but there are a couple of policies that we need to really get Colby engaged in, and so certainly we would not want to be changing the handbook without doing a policy review of this policy as well, I think upfront, and then the regs should then follow from the policy and the handbook connect properly to the regs, so I think it is something that, it's one of the, I don't, I don't know, we have like a top, what I see is we have about a top five or six policies that have bubbled to the top that we need to really begin to address with legal counsel or through the MASC, and those, those should be prioritized.
I would agree with that statement, I would say that an easy answer to this right now would be to specifically refer to the regulation and strike that portion out of the handbook, because it says already documentation-wise that JICH and JICHR provide, preside over this, so remove the confusion, strike that section, and just refer to the regulation until otherwise stated, and then if we do update it, it's just automatically updated and it's there, but that's, I personally am not comfortable approving this, and others can say what they want to say, until some of these things are understood, I don't want to be a pain necessarily, but I think there's significant difference, and as a parent, if I'm going to go say, I'm looking at the handbook and this is what it says, I'm going to go look at the policy and this is what it says, it just doesn't, doesn't seem like it should be out of alignment appropriately.
I'm sorry, Dr. Doxer?
Sorry, Dr. Doxer.
Can I understand what you're saying should be struck, because I'm having trouble keeping up with where you're referring to?
Sure.
So, so I have section eight here in front of me.
Section eight, part F.
It's further back, part, section eight, part F, so section eight at the top, code of conduct and behavioral expectations, and if you go to, oh, are you, to chemical health policies?
That's where I was.
Okay, so those.
So are you suggesting that all of the references to RACASA and referring to RACASA are being struck, or?
No, what, I believe what, what Mr. Wise is saying right now is that this section F isn't necessarily consistent with JICH dash R, which Mrs. Boynton is saying the assistant principals had pointed out, and as Ms. Boynton was saying, they really, they need to do a more thorough review, that's why these were just cosmetic changes, the question is, should this, what Mr. Wise is asking is, should this entire section F just be struck and say, and in place put JICHR dash R, but I'm not, that may not in itself, I mean, Mrs. Boynton would have to take a look at that, and I think the key is we, we do need to, we don't, we cannot meet again, this committee, I had checked dates, there is, unless we want to book a meeting with, knowing that we have less than the five of us at the meeting, that we cannot even schedule another meeting until August 1st, which is too late for the handbook to be released, so that's a little bit of the, the timing that we're in, which is again why we were just looking at the cosmetic-type changes. So I'm not sure if Mrs. Boynton feels like that's a review that you can do in a timely enough manner.
I don't know that it is.
Right, and this has been, agreed that this has certainly been out there.
For a number of years, yeah.
Number of years, and if it's not consistent, this, however, this policy, and maybe the thing to add to the statement is, is that this, this section is superseded by JICH dash R, and that, adding that one line in this section F is where there are inconsistencies, right, this section is superseded by JICH dash R, that, that would at least.
I think that's all you have, I'm sorry.
It's sort of in there already, but it just re, I mean, it's, it's actually in there already, but it, it's, but then you go and say, it's superseded, but by the way, here are things, and by the way, you were forced to refer to RACASA in these cases, which is fine, I think it's a great organization, I'm not, I'm fighting the referral necessarily, and I think the, the process there is, is really good, I'm concerned about the exposure of student records with FERPA, and if that can be answered, I'm fine leaving RACASA and even putting it into the policy at a later point in time or the regula, regulation at a later point in time, but I just want to make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
Can I just ask, is that voluntary, though, for the students to do that program? So they, they have to engage in the program?
We haven't had a student refuse to, to engage, you know, in theory, they, they could with potentially higher penalties, but we view RACASA as a proactive intervention because we see students, you know, beginning to make, you know, not great decisions about their, about their physical health and mental health, and this is a way to provide an intervention that, and as we've seen with some of, with Mason, has a really positive effect versus a punitive, here you are, you get a suspension, no, we're going to send you through a diversion program, and I know that many, many school districts have similar diversion programs that are a sort of collaboration between a community organization and the schools.
Ms. Dr. Doxer?
Two thoughts, one is that we do have representation on the board of RACASA, so it is a coalition that includes the Reading Public Schools, and we are both on there, and I'm wondering if that covers the connection with it, but I agree, you know, legal, legal, consulting legal will be important. The other thing is that on, at the beginning of the handbook, there's a handbook disclaimer, and the last sentence in the first paragraph says, furthermore, the school administration has the right to enforce any law, ordinance, or school committee policy not written in this handbook, if a new law or ordinance or school committee policy is passed, it supersedes current rules, so I'm wondering if that gives us the, the backing to go forward as planned, have it be a priority of the school council, so that the, the assistant principals know they have the backing and, and the permission to do the best job that they need to do, and parents are forewarned that there might be, and, and students are, are forewarned that there might be some tweaks necessary in this interim period, and, and if you'd be more comfortable if that's highlighted more, made its own paragraph in bold, or something like that.
Mr. Robinson?
So, that, that covers the, the supersede part, so I think, can, can we get a, and we may have one, I don't know, a memorandum with RACASA that states that they're held to the same level of confidentiality that.
We'll check into it, we can policy, they probably have a confidentiality agreement that they use.
I think that's what you're referring to, right?
I just don't know that offhand.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would be pretty certain that they do, because they're held to.
Yeah, we can.
Guidelines as well. We'll look into it.
Confidentiality guidelines are one thing, FERPA is a different thing, right?
Yeah, we can, we can check and see.
That's just, and I'm sure they're going to hold everything from a confidentiality perspective, I have no doubt about it, I'm just one, I'm just, if the door is open and there is a problem, will somebody use that door to, to come up with a problem, right?
So, so if that's not the case, then maybe we do the memorandum that, that extends confidentiality and FERPA as well.
Yeah, we can reach out to them.
So, I, I would, Mrs. Boynton, based on Mr. Wise's comments here, in the, the very beginning of that app, student chemical health policies, perhaps the wording is a little awkward there, but the chemical policy, chemical health policy.
You want JICHR or the handbook part?
In the handbook, where it's, it says in compliance with chemical health policy per Reading School Committee, the, in F, it really is that the chemical policy, the school committee chemical health policy is JIC, and the, and the regulation, JICR, right, must take precedence where there are discrepancies, so if, I think we can just clean up that note a little bit so that it's clear, and then people, all of our policies and the regs are, are accessible online, so I'm not quite sure that, I don't, I don't think at this juncture, given, this is also, you know, been a longstanding, or, or I don't know how long, how, how long it has been this way, because the policy may have changed, I forget when we last changed the policy, 2016, so probably since then, the, if the handbook hasn't had a good overview, then that's where that came out of alignment, so let's just make sure that that statement in the front of that section is really clearly referencing the school committee policy and then the Reading Public Schools regulation, that they would take precedence, and I think that that would certainly help in that section, hopefully. Mr. Quorum? If, if community members can still ask questions.
So, Jeffrey Quorum, Ridge Road, I, I understand Mr. Wise's point on that, I will say that, you know, as a parent, kind of, you find the handbook on the front page of the RMHS website, you download it, you look at it, trying to find, I'm, I don't actually know where I would go to look for JIC, right, so I, I dislike the idea of striking this section, because it just makes it harder for somebody to, have one document to say, look, everything I need to know, but I, I certainly take the point that it would be better to, to fix the wording there to say, indicate that this is a summary of the policy at the time that this handbook was put together.
Right.
To say that those policies, the actual policies take precedence, but here's, you know, the, the summary for, for ease of access. I have a few other comments on, on other parts that, if we want to finish this discussion first.
Do you have comments still on this part?
Still on this part, yeah, I mean, I, I guess to, to Mr. Quorum's point, yeah, if you don't know, and I know a lot of parents don't know, even though it's, you can Google search, school committee policy manual, it'll show right up, and just, if you don't know, Google search school committee policy manual for Reading Public Schools, it'll show up. This is, the school committee, the, the R and the H, the regular one, were written, this appears to have been added to that, because there's no reference to RACASA at all in JICH and JICHR, so if we want RACASA to stay as a portion of this process, which I do, then we either need to escalate JICHR from a review and JIC as a review, or something else, right, because this is saying by nature that everything that lists RACASA is null and void, because it's not in JIC and JICR.
I'd have to look at JIC again, but I, I guess I would like to at this point, I think Mrs. Boynton has made it clear that this needs a thorough review, we need to review JIC, we have a time-sensitive issue with the handbook, and I think that the best that we can do is, is clarify this note, and there were a few other corrections, we can follow up to with the, what the relationship with the documentation or memorandum is with respect to RACASA.
Yep.
And I think those are the actions that we can, that we should take, but I think we're still going to need to put a motion, the, Ms. Dr. Doxer will, can you, why don't we put the motion before us, we'll have some additional discussion, but clearly we're not going to, we just, we don't have the ability to meet again to review this, and I think we're going to need to rely on this, the administration to follow up on a couple of these items, and we're going to have to take a vote.
So I have more, but outside this item.
I want her to put the motion on the table, and then I really want, we, I want to finish this discussion up in no more than 10 minutes, so, go ahead, Mrs. Dr. Doxer.
Move to approve the Reading Memorial High School Student Handbook for the 2019-2020 school year.
Great, second. Ms. Brozki?
Um, this is, this has been a good discussion, and I'm, I'm processing it all, and I feel like there's a lot of common ground, there seems to be awareness that there's some inconsistencies and they need to be addressed, so I've been sitting here thinking, well, what's the right way to address it, and I am persuaded that it's, it's more than we have bandwidth to do today or even at our next meeting, the right way to do it is to break it into sections, have teachers and parents do the deep dive that you're talking about, and I appreciate, just from, it is a multi-year process, I appreciate your honesty about that, I think based on this discussion, this one part needs to be elevated as a very high priority, and working with, with us in coordination, make sure our policy, we don't want you working on this if we're working on the policy and we're not talking to each other, but I am persuaded that's the right path forward, so we tend to agree with that approach.
Thank you, Ms. Wise.
Okay, a couple other points of cleanup, potentially, section X or 10, part C, and section 10, part D, both refer to student leader, team captains, one of which appears to be a copy of the MIA rules, and one of which is just our own stuff, they're highly overlapping, so it's just seems to be duplicative, and maybe there's a best way to clean that up, but again, that could be.
That's another section that I.
That one I don't think is, is as critical, but just a note.
Well, or we plan to take a look at.
Um, section 11, or XI, part A, there's a policy that is JKAA, absolutely needs to be referred to, if not replacing that section overall, so that's something to consider in that space.
You lost that.
Which one?
Which one was that?
On restraint.
XI, XI, part A, we have a, we have, and it's, it's specifically our, it's on our key policies page even, too, is the, the restraint policy, in particular, XI, part A, sorry, Mrs. Boynton.
Uh, XI, part A?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, on restraint?
Yes, and.
So 11 restraint.
That one is probably not cosmetic, and probably can just refer directly to the policy, because restraint is a rather loaded topic these days, so let's make sure we don't run afoul by accidentally not following our own policy. There are two, section XI or 11, part Cs, so one probably needs to be a part D, that's a minor one.
Thank you.
And then there's, of course, a D after that. The second, part C, needs to probably refer to policy ACAB and ACCAC, which is the harassment and discrimination policy.
So I think that these, I, I don't, do not think that, as Ms. Brozki just said, that, that we're going to be able to do this, this handbook has been in place, the policy references may not be there, I, I just do not think we're going to have the time and the scope to do that for, and I, I think we've outlined that there's an approach, there's definitely an issue here, I believe Dr. Doxer highlighted that is there, the paragraph in the front that basically says that the policies take precedence, so I think that that's there, and we're, we're going to have to stand with that right now.
So I, I mean, I appreciate that, but I also know that there are some other key sections in here that aren't aligned with other policies that we have, and some of them are very important, bullying, for example, so I'm happy to say that remediation, and I'm, I'm just going to say it, I'm not going to vote for the policy, the thing that's on the table right now, I'm not going to say yes, because I think there are some significant differences that are important, but if that's what the committee agrees, that's what the committee agrees. It does. It does say in our own policy, CHCCA, you know, the committee approval will be necessary, what does it say? It's important that all handbooks bearing the name of the school system be of quality to reflect on the school department, they should be aligned with policy, the school council should review, review, et cetera. So, when they're not aligned with policy, it seems like we shouldn't approve. I don't wanna be pedantic, I don't wanna be a pain in the rear end, but there have been significant movements there that maybe need to be considered, so. I have others, and like I said in the beginning, I'm happy to share those others without going through them one by one, but.
So, I, I think at this point, again, unless we, unless, um, unless the new chair and vice chair at the end of tonight's meeting are planning on, or actually, I'm in control right now, unless I wanna pick a date and call another meeting that's consistent with, giving people time to do the review, I, I think we're short circuiting it. I think if we add to the disclaimer, we should maybe work the disclaimer and indicate a little bit more strongly, as Dr. Doxer said, that there are policies, we recognize that this handbook, um, will be updated next year to include all appropriate policy references that, um, and, and indication that the school committee policy, uh, can be found at, and let's provide the link, people don't know how to get there. But we basically, on this disclaimer right now, indicate that, recognize this handbook is gonna undergo a thorough review beginning next year, there are school committee policies that take precedent, and this is where they can be found. For right now, I don't know that we're gonna be able to go through, um, and reference, I mean, we can, if you've got the references, we can at least list the references, add, add the references to the sections. If you wanna send that to me, I'll work with the staff.
Yep.
Or the new chair or vice chair can work with the staff tomorrow. But I, I don't, I, I don't think at this juncture, I, I think it's good work, um, and we, you know, we recognize that it needs to be done. So, I think with the NIES, the work that the school council was doing, that that was a priority, and this couldn't, this just could not be a priority this year, so, um, I think, Mrs. Boynton, if you can sort of put some of those things into the handbook disclaimer, um, that would be helpful, and also put the link of the, um, to where the school committee policies are, I think that would be helpful. I don't know if other members have another suggestion?
I, I just wanted to point out that Dr. Quorum has had his hand up.
Dr. Quorum.
I guess I do have one quick question as to the implications, if this does not get approved, if the new handbook does not get approved, does RMHS then continue under the old handbook, which has all kinds of wrong information, including wrong schedules?
And, and wrong, wrong start time.
Yeah, right, right, wrong start time.
Yes, that is.
I have a couple of quick cosmetic things. Carolyn Wilson is listed as coordinator for the homeless in Section 11F. The detention times are listed as 2:15 to 3:15 in Section 8C. And I'm, maybe I'm just missing the blue and red, because I had the black and white copy, but Mr. McSweeney is listed as for reporting a student absence in 7D.
Yep, that should be red.
Okay. There's no replacement, obviously, because we don't have that yet. The other question I had was in Section 38, 3H, the weighted point, grade point average and class rank. My understanding was that the guidance department is looking to move to deciles instead of actual class rank, and I wonder where we are with that, or whether.
There's been no movement as far as I am aware at this point in time.
Okay.
Yes, that would be a much larger conversation.
Ms. Brozki?
Yeah, I think, I, I'm comfortable moving forward, because I think Mr. Wise has done a lot of really good work and thoughtful work, and my concern about starting to pick areas and say, let's cite the policy that goes with this, let's cite the policy, it's sort of a broader conversation about when do you cite the policy and when do you not? Do you always cite the policy? Do you just make one blanket statement at the beginning of the handbook and says, all school committee policy supersede everything in this handbook, and you never cite the policy? That's the kind of conversation I'd like to see happen, rather than us kind of say, well, you know, I found a bunch of areas that are inconsistent, let's quickly make a solution, that could potentially make your job harder next year, I think. So, it's clearly work that needs to be done, most definitely.
Ms. Wise.
One final point, and yes, I have a lot more, but I'll stop for the time being. The point has been made. I don't think that the answer to that question is yes, it would fall into last year's. By law, we have to approve one before the start of the school year, which just means we have to have a meeting to do so. We can't not approve one, technically. So, that doesn't mean we just default to last year's, that's not what would happen.
Well, I, I feel like at this juncture, we should still take, we have a motion on the table, we should take a vote, and if the committee votes to approve that, I feel like if, uh, I would rather have this handbook with the changes that we know and the information that's just been reviewed, and Mr. Wise, you can provide your email to me, and I can get it to Assistant Superintendent Kelly and Mrs. Dowd. If there are other changes that can be made before we need to release it, if we, if we approve it, they could incorporate those changes. However, the, um, I would say it would be really up to the next chair whether, uh, we wanted to, um, pursue some action that Mrs. Broz, Ms. Brozki described, I just think it's just something that's a more, needs to be a more systematic effort. It could be that a, another school committee meeting could be called, as long as you could get four or five members to, to come to a meeting between now and August 1st.
I'm not so sure I'll be able to get a quorum for school council, though, during the summer, so that's sort of either school council's job, one of the major jobs for school council, is to review the handbook and approve, um, any, any changes. And so, with due respect, I, I, we're aware, very much so, that the handbook, and I'm, this is, I just finished my first year's principal, and looking at the changes that do need to be made, the handbook is most certainly first and foremost among, you know, policy, um, sort of, policy changes, to ensure that we align with school committee policy, and to also make sure that we, um, that the document itself is worded in such a way that, that the intended audience, um, can access it, and it, right now, it, it is not the case. It is unwieldy, not student friendly, not family friendly, uh, and we're, we're well aware of that, and that, you know, as I said at the very beginning, is a very methodical and systematic process that really does need time, and does need the, the, um, the input of multiple stakeholders, including yourselves, as you look to shift school committee policy and district policy. So, I hope we can work together, um, to make this document, you know, it, it's living and breathing, but to make it, um, you know, to, to make it align with school committee policy, with district policy, accessible for our students and families.
Thank you. Dr. Doxer?
I'd like to thank the school council for working on the ESK so hard this year, and for committing to and anticipating the work that's necessary. I think that it would be a grave, um, mistake for us to try to rush into answers that, as Ms. Boynton, Dr. Boynton has said. Oh, sorry. Um, I'm just, I have the face.
She's excited.
That I think it would be doing an injustice to try to rush something so important, and that if we have a handbook that for the most part has been working, is respectfully written, has the disclaimer and the clauses that enable the conversations to happen, and if our legal has, um, approved what we have so far, that it would be doing an injustice not to approve this going forward with whatever changes you can do as you, as you create and recreate this living document. I think that every year, we're going to find this problem, this challenge, because the school committee is constantly revamping and upgrading our policies. So, if we upgrade something in December, it's not going to be accurate in the handbook until the following year. So, I think we need to recognize it as a living, breathing document, and appreciate that it takes time, and I really appreciate the work that you put into finding these challenges, and I think that will be helpful to the school council and save them time.
Usually, actually.
So, but I, I personally am going to support this handbook going forward, I'm going to approve it with my vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Doxer.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Ms. Parks?
Mr. Wise has some very valid points in regards to everything that's going on. I do agree that this document will need to be changed, and the policies have to be changed on the sooner side rather than later side. I'm not saying that this shouldn't be approved, I think it should be, but it's something that, when September hits, the school, the school council needs to take this as their first challenge. And it does need to be updated, and maybe we can revisit, you know, say, October, November timeframe, with updates that have already been submitted, so that we can review those updates and start moving forward for next year at an earlier time than in July.
So, to, to plan some review of the, of the sections that are updated?
Yeah.
Right, as they're sort of available.
I think it's nice to see it as it's going, and that way, if we do see things that are picked out, we can update at that time and say, hey, also, just be aware of this.
Right.
And that way, it's moving forward, we can see the progress, and we can guide where we need to on the school committee role.
I think that that could be, would be something that the chair would build into the calendar, so.
I would support that, I, I think it builds in a genuine dialogue, um, a natural dialogue between the school and the school committee as well.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, so, Dr. Doxer, we have a motion on the table, right, to approve the handbook, and it was seconded, I think, by Mr. Wise.
No, Mrs. Brozki.
Brozki, that was the first motion. Okay, I will take the vote, all those in favor? All those opposed? And the motion carries five to one. Thank you, Ms. Boynton.
Thank you very much.
All right. Our next item on the agenda, we're gonna sort of turn it over to Mrs. Presser for a while, um, to really sort of do some work with us, um, on sort of s, school committee best practices and roles and responsibilities, and, um, also sort of maybe help us with our protocol a bit as we work through that.
Well, thank you very much for having me. It's a pleasure to be here, working with you, I've worked with many of you before, not all of you, um, so it's nice to be back. Am I not talking, which one? Okay, well, just, I feel like I'm at a news conference now.
All right, you are.
So, uh, the, what I'm planning to talk to you about tonight is a, a review of roles and responsibilities, I think for a couple of you, this will be a review of very recent material that you heard about, um, and for others of you, that, that introduction is probably a little more in your rearview mirror. But, uh, as I go through talking about the roles and responsibilities, um, please make it as much a conversation as we can, uh, and then I'll talk a little bit about the whys and wherefores of operating protocols before we sort of dive into a review of the protocols that you have. So, we know that school committee practices impact student achievement, that what happens at the board table actually filters down into the classroom, um, and we know that in part because there's been research done. And so, the, the material that I'm gonna present, some of it is just, you know, because we live in Massachusetts, but some of it is based on, on the research that was done that, that defines some of the best practices of school committees that have that high impact on student achievement. There were three basic pieces of research that we look at. The first is the Iowa Lighthouse Study. They looked at districts that, um, they looked at some high achieving districts and some lower achieving districts where the demographics of the district were the same. And they looked at what were the practices of the boards in the higher achieving district that resulted in higher student achievement in those districts. Nancy Walzer wrote the Essential School Board Book, some of you may be familiar with a little thin red book. Nancy is a former member of the Cambridge School Committee. She went to 16 different districts around the country, urban, I always just wanna say urban, urban, rural, and suburban, um, that had turned student achievement around, that it saw it at, um, going to higher student achievement, and she talked to those committees about the practices that they changed that resulted in, in turning student achievement around and increasing student achievement. And the Panasonic Corporation has worked with urban districts for several decades in the United States, helping them implement practices of, of, um, that resulted in higher achievement, sort of showing that, yes, boards can learn, boards can change their practices, and that does have an impact on student achievement. So, out of that research, they have identified certain attributes and certain practices that are exhibited by higher, higher achieving, or higher, higher, in higher achieving districts by their school committees. So, some of the attributes are that they have a vision of high expectations, so when there are challenges, they look at those challenges as obstacles to be overcome, as opposed to excuses, um, about why things are the way they are. So, it's, you know, if we have a, a student population that, where the students have challenges, we're not saying, well, you know, their challenge, they come from homes that don't provide as much, but the, the, the districts support a way that helps those students overcome those challenges. They focus on accountability for themselves, um, as well as for other stakeholders in the school system. They foster strong relationships, again, amongst themselves and with the superintendent. We consider the superintendent and the school committee together to be the leadership team that needs to work together effectively for progress in the district. So, they foster those strong relationships, not only amongst themselves, but with all the stakeholders, not only in the schools, but in the community, because if you, you know, if you think about what you want to accomplish for your students, you really need the support of the entire community to be able to do that. They use data to monitor progress. So, even for those of you who have been on the, who just joined the committee recently, you probably quickly learn that there's reams of data that can come across your desk. And, but, school committees that have that higher impact take some time to understand the data, not just look at it and put it aside and look at the next piece of data, but also think about what data do we really need to dig into, um, to be able to understand and respond to that will enable us to have an impact on our students. And they lead as a united team with collaboration, trust, and respect amongst the team members. Those are the attributes. Some of the practices are that they set goals and monitor progress. So, having, knowing the direction, you know, having sort of looked at the data, looked at the challenges, set the goals for, you know, what is the direction that we want for this district that will help us have that continuous improvement in student achievement as we define it for our students. So, setting those goals, knowing where you're going. I, I love the phrase, if you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there, so, knowing the path that you want to follow, and then making sure that you monitor that progress. Most, uh, plans fail because of a fail to monitor progress. So, if you set the goal and just assume that it's gonna happen, it may not happen, but the, but that constant, um, accountability, wanting to make sure that your goals are being implemented, is important.
Can I?
Yes.
So, when you say set, so those are the, those aren't just goals set by the school committee, it's in conjunction with the superintendent?
So, you know, in, in the big picture, we're thinking about what's your district improvement plan, your district strategy, your strategic plan, whatever you call it in your district, that's that vision for looking several years out.
That's what you're referring to.
Yeah. And then, you know, under that, there's gonna be more specific goals about the shorter term, right, that get you to those larger goals. And, and both those really need to be monitored. Make sense?
Yep.
Varied and purposeful meetings that are focused on student achievement, so not just business meetings, um, where you're signing the warrants and approving the field trips, but, um, um, presentations that are focused on student achievement, that help you understand as, as a school committee, um, the work that needs to be done, the work that you need to support to move, uh, student achievement forward. And sometimes it's not a business meeting, sometimes it can be a workshop, that focuses on a particular topic. You, um, were talking earlier, but it sounds like you're gonna institute a later start time next year. So, along the line, there may have been a meeting that was focused just on that issue, to help you, um, you know, clear everything else out of the way, but be able to focus particularly on that issue and moving forward.
I think we try to be really cognizant, the chairs, planning the agenda with the superintendent of, you know, building these things in throughout the year, and trying to be very cognizant of, you know, not putting too much into an agenda so that you can focus on an item. It is really challenging, because you sort of, okay, we're gonna reserve this meeting for this, and then something. for this, and then something will come up that you, you know, you have to add in, and you have to add in some more meetings. And I know we did shift our meeting day from Monday to Thursday, which I believe has been helpful for staff. And, you know, trying to keep the work within the work week to the best extent possible, that was becoming really challenging for us as a board because the work was extending beyond the work week. And, you know, we as committee members do some of our work outside our work hours, which means we're sending emails, sometimes it's, you know, it gets hard. It means that the workday is from 6:00 a.m. till 10:00 p.m. So that's really a challenging from a perspective of the chair and trying to plan meetings and plan content that is the content that gets us, keeps us focused on the goals, but is managing sort of all the other pieces of the puzzle, even if you just look at the things like when you put on the calendar, the financial forums and the, you know, select board budget meetings, and, you know, all of a sudden, you've got, you know, a meeting a week. And it's very challenging, so.
That's very true. Engaging in self-governance, so occasionally stepping back and saying, are we doing what we said we would do? Can we do a better job of what we said we would do? So actually, I think tonight, you know, reviewing your operating protocols falls into that to some extent, as does engaging in board professional development. So, you know, understanding what's, what's the job? You know, how can we build our capacity to serve our students? So, you know, workshops is one way, the conference, I know I've seen many of you popping into the, our conference where, you know, there's a lot of material about learning what all the acronyms are, what they mean, how they get implemented, and learning what are the issues, you know, that are at the forefront, and how are different districts addressing some of those issues, sort of sharing best practices among districts. And sometimes, yeah.
Mrs. Broowski, I'm just gonna let members of the board know that you don't have to look to me for recognition if you're just asked, Arty.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to reiterate that. It has been a couple of years since I've attended the conference, but it's very informative and very well-run. But for me, the best part was talking to school committee members from different parts of the state and just the stuff that we inherited from the culture that existed before any of us were on the board. Things are done differently in other districts, and it's just, it's very eye-opening and really lets you look at our own committee with a fresh perspective.
Yeah. And one of the, one of the things that I enjoy about the work that I do and doing workshops with different school committees is sort of being able to cross-pollinate some of those ideas across, and if any of you happen to be free on Friday evening and Saturday morning, it's our summer institute. So you can, you can come along to Marlboro and get a little bit of professional development this weekend. And we put a lot of emphasis on the strong superintendent and school committee collaboration. I'll talk a little bit more about the importance of that in being able to move the district forward. But having that cohesive leadership team that's able to each play their role in moving the district forward is important, is one of the important practices that's been identified. Any questions up to this point, any other comments? So we do talk a lot about that collaboration and the leadership roles of the two entities. Both have obviously leadership roles, but they're leading from different perspectives. School committee is leading from a governance standpoint and the superintendent from a management standpoint. Superintendent's managing the day-to-day operations of the district. He or she will come to the committee with recommendations about goals, about policy, about budget. School committee deliberates on those recommendations, makes a decision, and then hands it back to the superintendent to implement the decisions that the school committee has made. So school committee is asking kind of big-picture questions, the what, the why, how much. And the superintendent is asking what you might think of as the more tactical questions, that decision has been made. How does it get implemented? Who does the work? When does it happen? Where does it happen? Particularly at goal-setting time, the committee is a bridge between the community and the superintendent. So as you're thinking about those goals or maybe budget decisions, you're bringing the vision and values of the community to the table, and the superintendent is bringing the needs of the staff to get the job done. So those, as you're considering, you know, what are the goals that we're going to approve? What are the action steps that we're looking at? What is the budget that we're looking at? That's where those two things come together. So if you think about, yes?
I just don't want to interrupt, she's on her flow. Speaking to the goals a little bit, my perception from being over there, and then, is that what we see from the outside as a public member is that goals are presented in one meeting, there's some discussion, and then they're approved. Is that a best practice, or is there more of a collaborative approach to goals between the leadership group here and the superintendent and potentially his staff? You kind of hit both in the way you just approached that, so I'm curious to know where that line sits.
I think, you know, for, at the time when the district strategy is developed, there's probably more collaboration, more discussion as it's implemented and, you know, the superintendent is talking about, here's what we're going to be working on in this year. Generally, those do get less discussion, or the goals, say, in the superintendent evaluation may get discussed in a subcommittee, but very often, that's more of a, you know, let's make sure we have a good understanding, and it's more of a, almost a wordsmithing in a subcommittee. But I, so the discussion about the goals very often isn't very extensive unless you're working on like the big plan that's gonna look out several years. And then I would also say that, just to jump ahead a little bit, that once the goals are set, thinking about how will we monitor and making sure that the goals are talked about and the progress is talked about during the course of the year is another time that those goals should be coming up in discussion. Not what are they, but how are they playing out? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I think where I'm struggling, and those of you that have been on the board longer, please chime in and correct me or whatever, is that bigger picture, that strategy one, like we have a three-year DIP coming up, right? So that's starting theoretically in September, whenever we have that conversation. Arguably, that is sort of that, but it's, the strategy's even bigger than that. The NISAC-related stuff in terms of what do we want the Reading student to look like sounds more like that topic, where maybe a three-year DIP fits inside that. I just, I almost wanna see it kind of like, you know, those little Russian dolls that kind of pack into each other, for lack of a better way to say it, to understand it mentally. I'm just trying to get my head around it properly.
That's not a bad analogy. If I think about, like, the biggest doll is the district improvement plan, and then the littler dolls would be things like looking at the superintendent's goals, the school improvement plan goals, and then there's gonna be things underneath that, the goals for administrators that you're not going to see, and the goals for teachers that you're not gonna see. But there's going to be in those, as you get down to the littler dolls to carry your analogy through, there's gonna be an alignment back to those district goals that you should, and for the things that you see, like the district improvement plan, like the school improvement plan, and like the superintendent evaluation, then you'll be able to see the alignment back to the big picture. And that's, those, if you're thinking about goals at more than one meeting, those goals are probably not all discussed at the same meeting in one shot and then go forward.
I think historically, what's happened here is the committee, and I think this is what Tom's referring to, the committee would, is, has been presented the goals more by the superintendent, and there's not a lot of collaboration in the, and that's not a criticism of anybody, it's just, it's been how it's kind of historically worked. There hasn't been a lot of collaboration on, before those are presented. So I don't see that happening at a business meeting, as you call them. I think that's more something that should happen at a retreat or a workshop.
We had those before my prior service, so 2010. And I think, you know, you were on the board a couple of years. We would try our best to do a little bit less, you know, it's still open public meeting, but maybe it's, you know, not all the lights, cameras, action, people were welcome. I know Mr. Brown would attend our Saturday meetings quite regularly. But we would, that's where we sort of had richer discussion, back and forth dialogue about that. And I think, you know, to the point that, once the three-year piece, you know, you have that three-year piece that that's set, then you're sort of looking at the, okay, this is where we are for this next year. That's a little different than, you know, really taking that good look at what's that next three-year view. And so I think we haven't done that in a while.
I think that's important, and we've gotten away from that.
I think it is, yeah.
And, you know, back to one of your earlier slides where you talk about, you know, this, I'm not using your, I'm using my words, where everyone walks away from the table happy and feeling like they contributed. I think that that's difficult to do in, you know, in a regular school committee meeting. Any meeting will always be an open meeting, but when you know you're not looking at the clock and it's hitting 10 o'clock and, you know, it's, you know, nine o'clock on a Saturday morning or something, and I think that would be more productive so that everybody feels like they had a seat at the table in the establishment of the board.
Well, I've been here at nine o'clock on a Saturday morning with you guys a few times. But I think you're right, and I think that, you're right, it is an open meeting, but if it's not a business meeting and the discussion is a little less, you know, not waiting to be called unnecessarily, but a little bit more of an informal discussion than, you know, we're following Robert's Rules discussion, then people do feel like they're able to contribute and shoot ideas back and forth and things a little bit more.
I think the piece, the oval in the middle, though, is absolutely critical because if that isn't there and the superintendent can't completely trust the committee, or the committee doesn't trust, if the committee doesn't trust the superintendent, then there's a whole nother issue there. But without that, it makes it hard to be truly productive in the pursuit of a district that is of the best quality it can be for students.
Mm-huh.
And so, you know, I think that that's, that's something that's just really critical. And, you know, attending, so in terms of building those relationships, attending things like the conference together, or I've been to some of the workshops, it's been a long time, the institutes, you know, as members, or whether those are things that give an opportunity for, you know, the superintendent to also attend with some of the members are, you know, maybe important mechanisms to continue to look for and to continue to build that trust because you're not gonna get the solutions unless you have the trust.
I think one of the challenges, too, is that when, recalling the process that I've been involved in over the last five years, is that there are many meetings with the superintendent and the leadership team, and they arrive at district goals that I feel they're much more intimately engaged in and educated about. And at our meetings, I have appreciated the opportunity to ask questions about where they're coming from and why those are prioritized. So the time that's necessary to go back and forth, because the leadership team might not be here, but the superintendent represents what their discussions have been, the challenge being in the district that's overwhelmed with things to do and the need to move forward and the need to gather data, it's just, I think it's very challenging. And the balance of what our role is, once the, once the leadership team has sort of decided what they think the priorities are, who are we to contradict that? We can gain a better understanding, we can make suggestions.
Well, and, but I think that, you know, that goes along with sort of the, representing the vision and values of the community, that if you are there as, you know, if there is some conversation as they're developing, then, and they come to you before they're a fait accompli, right? Then you have the opportunity to have some of that back and forth and feel like, you know, the superintendent is, again, that may be the bridge between the committee and the administrative, his or her administrative leadership team. But if there's discussion as they're developing, then there's that chance a little bit for more back and forth. So I think what I'm hearing is that this committee is desiring maybe a little change in your structure so that you have some Saturday workshops or some, you know, I gave the example before of, you know, maybe something that delved into late start time. Maybe something that delves more into goal and direction is something that you would like to have a workshop on.
Yeah. I think sometimes the processes, though, with the chair, I'm not sure that they've been in detail about goals and objectives. I think one of the things that we've done is, Dr. Darty has often sort of presented, these are sort of the guiding principles or the priorities, and these, and we've asked around budget particularly, I'm thinking, for members to give sort of the guiding principles, which are, which often reflect the community view, right? So, you know, this is pretty override, but, you know, guiding principle was, we need to have a foreign language, a middle school model. We need to have a foreign language program in our school district in the middle schools, right? This is important. So I think what we've done before is try to get that information, but it's been like, it's been more handed off and the superintendent goes, works with his team, right, develops some things and comes back versus having that little bit more informal Saturday morning, you know, push and tug and getting into the details.
But I think what I hear Mr. Wise saying is, it's, it's not one meeting where, you know, that, that, the discussion could take place over several meetings to sort of get to, you know, it doesn't mean that it's always with all the leadership team sitting there.
Right.
But sort of a, you know, let's, let's have a discussion, let's have some back and forth and consideration and time to think.
Right.
When I veer off a little bit, but, 'cause I do talk about goals all night, too, if you wanted me to. But, you know, we often think of that district plan as being sort of aspirational, having maybe three to five really big-picture goals, that I kind of think of as targeted vision statements in certain areas. It might be around communication, around teaching and learning, around facilities or different, you can see that they tie together, but they're really sort of targeted vision statements for different areas. And then annually, you're gonna be thinking about, so what do we do this year to get closer and closer to our vision? And that's why I think that that, sometimes those annual plans are less of a, less of a discussion, partly because if you're monitoring, in year one, if you're monitoring the goal progress, then you're really learning all year, in a sense, what the next step is gonna need to be. So that when year two or comes up and the superintendent recommends, you know, this is, this is the action plan I have for year two, you've seen it build and you're, there's an expect, you know, oh, yeah, that makes sense. We know where we've been in year one, we know where we want to go, so this makes sense for year two, and so forth. That make sense?
Yeah.
Ready to go on? Okay. So, oh, my last little oval there. So when you have that trust and respect and all those things are working well, then you have the trust of the community as well. So there's also a difference between the role of the school committee and the role of an individual member of the committee. So the committee exists right now because you're in a properly posted meeting, but outside of those properly posted meetings, the committee really doesn't exist. You're all men on the street. And you have no authority unless it's been specifically granted to you by the committee. So that, you know, the chair has certain authorities by virtue of being the chair, liaison responsibilities, subcommittee responsibilities, and so forth. However, you do have the responsibility, all of everyone, to come to meetings prepared, to be ready to contribute to discussions, to ask sometimes those critical questions that need to be asked. I think we all know that the best decisions are made when there is sometimes input from a number of voices. Hopefully, you can come to consensus with some of those things, you know, bounce ideas off each other and come to some good decisions. But even if you are, if you feel like you've been able to be part of a discussion and have your contribution... even if you are on the no side of a vote, you support that that whatever happens goes, whatever the vote was goes forward, which doesn't mean turning around and agreeing with it, but it does mean not standing in the way of it being implemented. Make sense? Then as the committee, you're governing through policy, have the fiduciary responsibility to make sure the financial resources are being used appropriately, engaging the community in the work of the schools, sustaining that relationship with the superintendent, and you are the employer of record on the collective bargaining agreements. And hopefully working to be part of the team and building that trust with your team members.
So, one of the things that I, I think, I just really want to talk about it, because I have some very specific views on it, but I think, I think it's very difficult when, if we have a role in the community prior to, say, becoming a school committee member. I'm not talking about parent, I'm not talking about things related specifically to like my kids in the Reading public schools. But I think it's very difficult when you try to continue that role, because the re, this, I feel that we can think we have, and we, we have multiple hats, but I feel like that committee hat takes precedence. So that especially in dealing with, when I, when you talk to people, they, they still see you as you are a school committee member. You are their elected official, they may have voted for you, may not have, but you are now their elected official. But especially in dealing with the staff, it's very, I, I, I think that we are the superintendent's boss. And I think about this in my own corporate sort of environments too. But I'm the person who basically decides Chris Kelly's, I manage her boss, right?
Can I back up?
As a committee member, I'm part of that, right?
Yeah, you're one-sixth of, the only, so.
I, I agree, but when, when I'm talking to her.
But you're not, because you're only, you only have one employee.
I only have one employee, I recognize that. But if I am, if I am going to talk to Chris instead of the superintendent, these are the superintendent's employees, right? We are supposed to respect that chain of command.
Correct.
But if I go and I have a, I'm going to try to do something that, okay. I was on the science team and I was a coach. And if I went to talk to the principal of Coolidge, because I have something that I think is really important that we should be doing on this science team, and I, and I want to make that happen, as a parent, a coach, a coach on the science team, if I was just a coach on the science team and not a school committee member, then I think I can go talk to Sarah Marshant and tell, tell her my idea about what, how this should run. I'm a coach, I think we should be doing this differently. But I think because I also am one-sixth of that school committee, I am a school committee member, when I go talk to Sarah Marshant, she doesn't see me just as a science team coach. She sees me as that one-sixth that has a certain fiduciary responsibility and a certain power over this school district. And I, that's what I have always found difficult and that in general, I, I mean, I know, I, I was a PTO president when I became a school committee member, I finished that out. And then I didn't have other community roles, other than as appointed through the school committee or as a parent. So I just think it's, I think it's really difficult when we try to go talk to, even sometimes there are issues with, you know, we may not have, our kid may have not gotten the teacher, the, I'm just, I don't know, whatever, the high school social studies teacher that we absolutely wanted them to get. And if I was just a parent, I might complain or voice my opinion or do something, right? I might send an email, whatever. Right, but as a school committee member, right? As a school committee member, I have, I see that as a greater responsibility that I almost can't do that. Like I need to respect that I am that one-sixth and I shouldn't be putting a staff member in that position. And I, I, I feel like that's a hard line to walk. But I, I feel like the school committee, that one-sixth takes, takes precedent, is supersedes my other roles and have felt like, other than, not as a parent per se, I just, I think there are some, there's some difficult lines you can walk, even as a parent. But like if I, obviously if I had an issue with a parent, I'm going to call the high school principal, if that's what I need to do, because I have an issue with my kid and I, that's, and if I've done all the other things, then I'm going to call the principal. But I just, I always see that as, you know, this individual, your committee responsibility. And I feel like even though sometimes you say, I'm not saying this as a committee member, I'm saying this as, you know, Elaine Webb, citizen of Reading, I, I don't always, I just don't think that that works too well, especially for staff who have to also see us as that one-sixth.
Well, I, and I, honestly, I think some of that goes to trust. That if there's trust, that they know that people are acting in a role as a parent or as a science coach and there, there's no intention there of trying to have undue influence, then I think that makes a big difference.
I, to me, it goes back to what I learned at last year's mass conference, relationships, relationships, relationships. I know I am part of this dynamic that's being described, because I'm involved in a lot of things in town. And I, as an example, something that just came up, I'm very friendly with a Holocaust survivor who comes to the school to teach, and the only thing she'll, she wants is informal time with teachers to find out what they want. And so last year I invited teachers to a lunch at my house, so they could get together with her. I do that as I've done for the last 10 years, way prior to my school committee role, to invite people, and they can always say no, they don't want to come, but it's an opportunity. Once I've channeled it through and made other people responsible, then A, I'm taking up their bandwidth for something that is, it doesn't need to take their, in, as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't need to take their bandwidth. I'm hoping that the staff trust me when I say, you know, this is an opportunity, not an obligation. And so when I called the district attorney's office or talked to other people about what I have to give up to be a school committee member, what was articulated was that I had to give up my job reporting for the newspaper on the schools. I did that. And then the rest was said, I need to make sure that people know which hat I'm wearing when I approach them, when I talk to them. My reaction to the coach example is that, I know, I know it's not about me, it's about all of us. But when the coach example is, we also have a responsibility to the children that we're working with. So the discussion under a different hat should level the playing field. It shouldn't come as an edict from a school committee member who is coach. It should be a discussion between a coach and a staff member. And that's that trust issue that you're talking about.
I think that's a trust issue, but I, I think there are instances where you think, how can I do this to maintain the trust? Is there like, you know, we talk about the chain of command, chain of communication, that, you know, if you, if you have a problem with a teacher, you know, you start with the teacher and then you, you kind of move up the ladder. Sometimes I think with school committees, we need to sort of follow that chain in reverse and, and, and talk with the superintendent and say, you know, I just, I want you to know I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about this or I'm doing this and, and so sort of build that trust downward the other way. I really do think it comes back to trust, that if people, if you can help build that understanding of, hey, the hat's off, then, you know, they, they will respect that. And it won't, there won't be the feeling that there's this underlying attempt to influence or attempt to coerce or use my role inappropriately.
I agree, because I also think that one of the rules I wa, I work by is making sure I'd never blindside someone. So I did mention, always mention, I'm just talking in the I, because it's my, so I'd mention things to the superintendent that I'm planning to do, I would get feedback. And I'd listen, it would be a conversation, but I still could wear different hats while I'm a school committee member.
I, I think it's tricky area, I think the key phrase was, you know, there has to be trust, there has to be no intention of undue influence. And I, I'm not sure that I think that they really feel like they can, that the staff can always feel like they can always say no. I think it's, I think it's a tough spot sometimes that we put the staff in, when we, when we do, do things. And whether, you know, that's why I always feel like it is really important that these things need to go to the superintendent, because he, he or she would get to decide how to couch that to their staff. But I think it's, I think it's a tricky line, I think it's, I think, I don't know. For me, it's consumed a lot of energy.
Mr. Wise?
I mean, I think trust is a huge part of it, but I also think, going back to the goal discussion, working as a team is a huge part of it too. You know, we are who we are, people, as you get to know people, sometimes that trust gets grown just by the fact that you know them and you know their motivations and what they're trying to achieve and why they're trying to achieve what they're trying to achieve. And sometimes it's school-related and sometimes it's completely different. You know, putting the, 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 Mrs. Dr. Doc's eye on, yes, I'm probably one of those other people as well. And sometimes my intent is just to make sure communication's clear. Just to make sure that Mary's talking to Bob, because I'm getting two different stories. And just, hey, you know, I'm not, I'm here as this, this role, I'm hearing this, is that true? Yes or no? And that's really all it is, it's not that I'm trying to make, you know, anybody do anything else in particular or anything else along those lines, but there, there are those kind of things that happen. And we are still citizens of Reading, we're still taxpayers of Reading, we're still parents of Reading, we're still volunteers in sports clubs, still volunteers in math clubs and science clubs and, you know, still business owners in Reading as well. We have many hats and we can't avoid the fact that we're wearing many hats. We just need to be clear with people about which hat we're wearing at that point in time and have the relationship in place that people can trust that the hat, that's the hat you're wearing.
I think, just a couple other points and then hopefully we can move on. But I think that, you know, sometimes when you're thinking about something, there are certain things that you, you absolutely have the right to do, right? But to think about, but is it the right thing to do? So sort of turn the question around a little bit. And I think the other thing in, you know, in terms of thinking about staff, and again, it, it goes, I think it goes a little bit back to trust, is to respect the superintendent's ability to manage his or her staff without going around the superintendent or, not that you intend to go around. I mean, it's something simple about, is the right person talking to the right person? The right person to find out if person A and person B are talking might be person C, the superintendent, not the school committee member. So, so I think, so just kind of thinking those things through before jumping. Look before you leap, I guess.
I think how we communicate, how we communicate is really important. Especially when you're using, you know, emails or text messages, but, you know, it's that, that how, you need to think about, you know, how, how is that person receiving that information and making sure that, you know, if there isn't a strong relationship of trust there, then I think you have to be even more careful and about what might be conveyed intentionally or unintentionally. So, but I think it's process.
That's where this comes in.
Phone call.
An actual call can solve so much, because you can't read personality as you're talking to a person. If, if I get a text from somebody, I can't tell where their mindset was. I pick up the phone and say, hey, Tom, what's going on today? Guess what? I'm going to understand right away. And I think that's something that, that needs to be realized, is text isn't always the best way, email's not always the best way, if you get a question, pick up the phone. I have no fear in calling one of my peers if I don't understand something in this packet.
John is the most frequent caller. Quick phone call.
Yeah, and I would rather do that than come in here not prepared and try to read into somebody's text message.
I have a friend who will send an email sometime and I'll email back, like, what? And he's like, it was a joke, but it didn't come through in just the text, right? You know, in just the text of the words.
But I would clarify though, to your point, I agree, a, a phone call to one of us, but not to the staff. Especially if it's about something on the schools, we would go to the superintendent.
I'd go to the chair before I went anywhere.
Right, but I wouldn't call if, if Mrs. Dowd is giving a presentation on X and I have a question about that, I would call the superintendent, I would not call Mrs. Dowd with my question. That's the superintendent's role.
So, some of the things that we know about the practices of effective leadership teams, we know a good relationship can have a positive impact on student achievement. And you can, you know, could sort of think of it, kind of goes with progress isn't made in, in the time of conflict. You know, when, when things are running smoothly amongst that team, everybody just feels more settled, ready to dig into the work. You can almost think of it sometimes in, in a household where the parents are arguing a lot, the kids aren't going to feel settled. But when everything's running along smoothly with, you know, the, the, the people running the show, then everyone feels more, more settled and more ready to dig into the work. We do know that leadership changes can halt progress, so obviously the opposite of that is consistency in leadership facilitates progress. You're not making, if, if there is conflict, people are concentrating their energy on the conflict as opposed to moving forward. A good relationship is a model for everyone else in the system that, that's watching what's going on at the top. It helps gain community support and confidence in the schools when they see things running well. You know, sometimes I show a little video clip of a, of a, like, meeting that just goes totally awry. And, and actually the, the, sort of the moral of the story of that, of that video clip is it is a district that was a top performing district in the state, lost the state superintendent of the year, lost their first override or their equivalent of an override in well over 10 years, and saw student achievement plummet. So, you know, what, what is happening at the top definitely affects what's happening in the rest of the district. And when it is going well, you're enjoying success in the job that you were elected to do and that is taking time away from other things in your life, right? Superintendent is having job satisfaction and staff morale is higher. And then, you know, if you're having that change because there's conflict, then that obviously is costly to the district. So some of the things that we know are in place with effective leadership teams, are they, they have that shared value and that common vision, they've had those discussions and, and, and know that they have those shared values, understand the roles and responsibilities of the parties in the relationship, have established operating protocols, I know we'll be talking about those, having goals and monitoring progress. When I first started doing a lot of this governance work and was helping committees establish operating protocols, we, you know, we'd get it done and I think, oh, good, they're ready to, they're ready to just forge ahead now. And then I realized that the other piece that needed to be in place was that discussion about, do we agree on what, the direction we're headed in? Do we have goals that help us understand that we're united in this one direction? Periodic evaluations to make sure you're on track, you know, the school committee self-evaluating, are we doing what we said we would do or could we do it better? And, you know, the, obviously the superintendent evaluation. Working to maintain relationships, even when they're going well, don't just take for granted that they'll always go well, but continue to work. And then, you know, communication, it's like the realtors, location, location, communication, 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 to, to make sure that, that, that information is flowing, relationships are, are moving along and people are understanding.
Can we talk a little bit about that one? My perception or concern, and I've actually talked to Mrs. Webb about this as well, is that we as a committee, due to open meeting laws and others, don't actually have a chance to communicate much at all as a committee. There can be a one-on-one conversation about non-topics, because we can't really talk about topics because of chain of conversation and all that kind of fun stuff. But there's really not much that we get to talk about from a perspective of the schools or otherwise, in this forum or otherwise, only when we're specifically asking very specific questions. And then it's really not a discussion, and say, what's your question, what's your question, what's your question? So how do you, what's the best practice for fostering school committee communication in compliance with OML? And given the fact that you have to be aware of chain-based And given the fact that you have to be aware of chain-based communications that could lead to OML violations and other things like that.
Well, you know, some of that is just having the, the workshops and the, and the less formal discussions where you can, um, you know, pick a topic and, and pick through it. And have the opportunity to have those discussions and back and forth. Um, you know, honestly, I think, you know, you're sort of shooting questions at me, but you're, you're also having some discussion amongst yourselves and in this forum. And I think it, you know, what hap- I happened, you know, you have the presentation from the high school principal, but you were having some discussion amongst yourselves along, along those lines too. Um, so I think, you know, being able to pick a topic and, and, and you might have a presentation to set off a discussion. Particularly when you're getting to, you know, you're deliberating and making a decision about something, you're gonna be having a discussion amongst yourselves about getting to that decision.
What's, can I?
All right.
What's the, uh, with regard to communication as well, what, what, what do you see with, with regard to use of social media as a, because that's not going away. And, uh, you know, we, we don't have a formal policy, but we've, we've maybe, uh, kind of a, uh, where we've chosen not to get into dialogue on that, uh, eve- as, as a, as an appointed per- or as a selected member or as a committee or anything, we just haven't done it. And you know, sometimes there's opportunity to, and I refer to them as brush fire, put out a brush fire, uh, you know, early be- because there may be some misinformation. Uh, and we just don't do that. So a lot of times things just get out of hand and I think it's something we need to think about doing.
We do have, I didn't bring it with me tonight. We do have some guidance on social media. Um, and, you know, some of it is, any, if you, if you engage at all, it's with information. It's not to engage in a back and forth, but it's with, if you see a brush fire you could put out by pointing people to the right source of information, then, you know, whether it be the chair or you have some other protocol for, um, letting someone in the, the central office know. You know, if you can send people a link to the right information, um, but just do it in a very informational sense, then it, sometimes it is appropriate to, to step in and do that. Um, and sometimes you have to think about, um, will the brush fire put itself out? If, you know, if, if there's.
Sometimes it becomes a forest fire.
So.
Yeah. Every, every town has.
I think this, this, I mean, this just came up in relation to the superintendent's leave and the, you know, things got out right away. We worked as, as fast as we could as a district team and, and, uh, to, to, you know, to get information out and make it available. Now, we put it out in all the school channels. I believe the principals put it up on their pages. Um, we sent it to the press. Um, I did provide all the committee members with a little bit of additional information as I saw. I don't look at these myself, but committee members send me things. And, um, you know, I tried to put information, some information together that committee members could respond. But, um, I, I think we, we had in the past chosen, you know, not to get on, I don't know, the Reading rant or whatever, whatever the page is, and respond. And try to use, get responses out, get information out, but through the channels that we've, you know, used.
So, and I think to some extent, it's a longer term. Fix is probably not the right word, but, um, there's, um, if you want to do a little more reading, there's a book called Embracing Social Media, which was written by a teacher about schools and social media. Um, and talks about building your own so- so- sort of social media presence so that the district becomes the go-to place for information and become, and can build that positive culture. Um, so, and some, you know, I'll have to say I'm a bit of a Luddite in the, in the social media world, um, because I know there's things that are like pushouts rather than, um, you know, rather than you have to go seek it. Um, I pull in, I guess would be the, um, so, you know, people don't have to go looking for the information. It's automatically pushed out to them if they want to get the notifications. But, um, you know, having some guidelines about how social media is used by staff and members. But working to have a social media presence, um, where you become the go-to place for information is a way to, um, it's, it's not an easy, it's not a, you know, how do we respond to what happened today fix. It's a longer term.
Yeah, I mean, but you don't, you don't get the weekend anymore, right?
Right. Well, I mean, think about, you know.
And that's just the way it is. And I accept that.
If the high school principal were still here and there was ever a lockdown, she would probably say the kids, the parents knew about it before the, because the kids were probably all texting home, right? That the, there's no way sometimes to stay ahead. And, and the best thing that, that, that the high school administration could do was know the facts before they started to put anything out. So that, there's, I don't know.
That's a timing issue though too. That, that you take some time sometimes to gather the facts.
Exactly.
And so the social media stuff is out there before the facts are gathered and it's not facts. It's, it's, it's some information, but it's also misinformation. That's very frustrating.
I think he just put out a, a, a one bullet that says, I'm aware of the, we are aware of the situation. We'll have more information.
Yep, yep.
But the schools.
If that buys you some time.
Are you talking about though, the school committee, like having a Facebook presence versus, because all of the schools have, have social media presence.
No, let me stop you right there. Because generally the school committee can't put it, can't reasonably do anything that the district can't do itself.
Dorothy was, I didn't know, you know, referring to how you respond.
No. Pardon?
School committee can't reasonably do anything.
Can't reasonably, um, have a Facebook presence that puts out anything of more than the district could put out on it, its own Facebook presence. Because it's information. So really all you're being able to do is repeat information that comes from the district.
But I think there's different topics at hand here potentially, right? I mean, there's the one case of, of John's leave of absence is an interesting case. And Chuck's thing, maybe we could have said, hey, here's a quick thing, more details to come.
Yeah, but it could have gone out through a district. It could have gone out through a district Facebook page. It didn't have to be.
It could have, except for the fact, except for the fact in that case that Dr. Doherty reports to us and people look to us to tell that information. That's, that's a debatable discussion, but that's, that is by law, he reports to us. So as such, we are responsible for some sort of answer in that regard. In terms of other things from a social media perspective, you go to Weber and you go to Penn Tocchet, you go to other places, school committees have Facebook pages that are publicly posting, say minutes, agendas, other things along those lines that are information, to your key point, that is the school committee's own Facebook page that they're publishing. That's one thing. The other, the other things about it as well is there now is very clear case precedence for, with the division of government about what can and cannot be posted and what constitutes deliberation and what doesn't constitute deliberation. Our own electronic communication policy right now does not talk about social media, other than to say we dissuade people from using it. It's primarily based on the old DOG rulings around email. It's not based upon the recent.
It's hard, I mean, it's hard to keep up, it's hard to keep up the policies with all the new platforms that, that tend to pop up. But, but, you know, in, if you, yes, other districts have Facebook pages or other committees have Facebook pages. But all that they're putting on their Facebook page could easily, I mean, it's probably a duplicate to what's on the district Facebook page.
We have a district web, a school committee page on the district website that, you know, as, as information is approved by the committee, right? That, that, that gets refreshed.
Yeah, but I think, I think Mr. Wise is talking about a Facebook page as opposed to a district.
Well, I guess I.
Big difference from a communication perspective, Elaine, and a perception. Sometimes it's just perception. You go back two pages to community trust. This is all sometimes about community trust. And how do we build that? How do we make sure that everybody knows, you know, what's going on? Sometimes, I don't know how many times I heard during the campaign, I have no idea where to go for the policies. I have no idea where to go for the minutes. I have no idea where to go for the agenda.
I think it's frustrating because we feel like we've communicated it a lot, right? Like when you feel like you've communicated, there's a blog that goes out, all the schools, the principals put out their newsletters, they put out electronic blogs. They are pushing stuff, but by the way, right, you can elect not to get the push. And then when you say, then it's like, I didn't know. Well, you stop getting the push. And I understand, how many of these notifications can we all get all the time? But, so it is, you know, from that perspective, I, and I'm probably in the same boat as Dorothy. I just, I feel like I, I, I'm connected to the blogs. I go to the websites. When my kids were in school, I got everything, right? Uh, you're on headline or Black, whatever we're using now, right? So I, I think it's, but if, if it's restricted, if the Facebook pages are basically, basically restricted because you can't have the dialogue and they're not putting anything really more on the pages than, because you can't, how can you respond really to a Facebook post that has misinformation in it? The committee can't unless, the district is in a much better position to respond because they would have the actual information. Whereas the committee can only put out like, okay, this was in our minutes. You know, somebody could look at it and say, okay, this was in the minutes or this was on the agenda.
There's a lot more the committee can do than that. I mean, you, there's a lot more information you can share than that. You, I mean, there are some times it's just a simple question. And here's the answer, here's the policy, here's a link, whatever.
But the, but the, but then the, the question becomes who's the spokesperson who's gonna do that? And if you respond in a way that other people disagree with, you're responding as an individual and not the committee. That, so that's where.
Interesting point is, am I responding as an individual? I'm still a person, I still have a Facebook profile, or am I responding as a committee member? And sometimes goes back to what, you know, Mrs. Webb was raising about, you know, what hat are you wearing? And how does everybody know what hat you're wearing?
Well, I mean, I think you, I mean, you know, if we got down the road that far, you, you were the, we would, you would say, uh, as the committee-appointed spokesperson for January or whatever, just use that as an, this is the answer.
Yep.
And then it's very clear that you're, that you're, you're reporting back from, for the school committee, not, not your own opinion, the, the, the committee as a whole's opinion, right?
And that's the catch, because if we're reporting back, but it's really the superintendent who should be answering or a staff member that should, I'm not saying they should. I'm saying that they are the experts on that.
Well, I mean, in theory, they would have, I mean, if I was made the spokesperson for that month, I would consult with people before I.
But, but you can't. That's the problem. You can't.
I would consult with staff.
Staff, superintendent, yeah. Which is what we do when we answer the emails. The, the chair or their designee is, is responsible for answer, answering the emails that come into us. But we, in order to avoid OML violations, no other committee member gets that until the answer is sent, it's sent back out. Um, it's actually sent into the packet. So the person gets the email. But the, the person who's responsible, whether it's the chair or a designee, is always working with the superintendent or he may say, oh, work with Chris on this, let's get the answer, let's decide, you know, what, what are, what's the approach gonna take? Because, right, you don't want, we don't, we don't, we, we cannot do the operational piece. But often there's an operational piece.
The community wants to hear from us on it. So, uh, you know.
And oftentimes the, the brush fires or forest fires, some of them are operational, but a lot of them are, what is the school committee doing here? And sometimes it is our answer that needs to go out in some way, shape or form. Um, and again, whether that's who's the appointed authority, are you responding as, on behalf of the school committee or on behalf of you as an individual? There can be guidelines or our own policy should be discussed about what we want to do in that space. And that policy can refer to those three cases, probably, you know, Arlington's one. There's another one, uh, Provincetown on the end of the, on the end of the Cape. And there's one more that are very, very clear about what the rules are.
So there was one thing that you said that I, that I wanted to highlight because I thought it was, and it's the thing that I've been thinking about is, we've all been talking, is should it be a district or a school committee page? What if there's duplicative information? And I think that's a really valid, valid point. What we don't want to have is two different pages. If, if the idea is that we are a combined leadership team, having two separate communication channels would, would work against that goal. Like, oh, I, I'm gonna go check out the school committee page, but that doesn't have operational staff. I'm gonna check out the district page, but that doesn't have school committee minutes. It does seem like one.
Well, and, and, and in some ways, that's why, you know, this discussion is not, you know, I can give you the answers so tomorrow everything will be okay. Some of this is, you know, having a strategy around social media. And, and, um, which is a, a bigger piece than we're gonna tackle tonight.
Absolutely. But I guess my point was that there shouldn't be a district approach to district media and a school committee approach to, to social media. There should be a cohesive and combined and unified approach.
Well, I mean, you just call it the school committee page and, and the district as well as the school committee has, uh, administrative rights to post stuff on that probably. I mean, that's, I didn't mean to get down.
Let me ask a question. Um, so mask guidelines. I know that we are not allowed to see that someone has answered a question, as Mrs. Webb said, until the packet is published. Is that a guy, is that?
I, I just.
An open meeting law requirement that can't be shared?
So, explain a little bit more, what's the, what's the vehicle here? What's the?
So if a question comes in from, um, the community to the school committee. And the school committee, we either triage it to someone for an answer or the chair answers that question. It might already have been done, but the school committee does not know that that question that came to all of us was answered or how it was answered until we get to the next meeting and we, or when we get the packet for the next meeting. I personally find that difficult because I'd like to know what the answer that was sent out was in a timely way because that's already out there to the person that received it.
Yep. Basically, the, what happens is the chair is responsible. They can designate someone else to answer. They either answer it usually after discussion with Dr. Doherty, or it gets, they, they answer it and say, this is a operational administrative issue and it's forwarded to Dr. Doherty and he's gonna have his staff answer it. And so that's how we answer it. The thing that we've been doing, we modeled after the select board in town, which was that those emails, when this, when the chair or their designee answers the email, it goes back to the person in the community, copied to the superintendent and Mrs. Angelson. And Mrs. Angelson then puts that in our packet. So the thing that we haven't been doing is sending that out, back out to all the school committee members because we're trying to prevent OML, um, violations by, if we were to reply to the, um, individual in the community and we copy all of the school committee members, if that individual then continues the dialogue with all of us, we're, we're breaking the rules. So what we had done.
No. I don't thi- it's if you start a dialogue with each other that you're breaking the rules.
So what if we BCC?
The fear, the fear what? Oh, if we BCC the DG.
What if we BCC the DG? Then at least we all know there's an answer. We can't respond to anybody but the sender, right?
Which is the chair.
Which is the chair.
Would be the chair or Linda, right? And Miss Angelson.
Or sometimes one of you.
So, but doesn't that, but doesn't that whole, doesn't that, Linda, I mean, I'm, doesn't that go back to trust though? I mean.
But can I, can I just?
Someone's answering the question.
But, but, but you might want the information.
Right. I wanna know how the question was answered.
Yeah, I don't think it's, she's saying so much that she doesn't trust it's being answered. It's that
Correct. I'm not saying that.
That she would also like the information. Suppose, you know, the same question comes up in the grocery store. That, you know, then people have the information. I think that's what you're saying.
That's exactly what I'm saying. I'd just like to know how the question was answered at the same time the public gets it.
Right.
Because when I'm asked, I wanna be consistent or I wanna fi- call the superintendent and understand better the answer. But it's not whether, so much whether, whether the question was answered as what the answer was, so that I'm educated.
So I, I, I think it, I think again, when we put the policy in place, we were modeling what the select board does and we make sure that those get in the next packet that that's available. I mean, if it, maybe the BCC on the distribution group solves that, um, you know, getting people out without, you know, the, the key was if some, if, if a member, if a school committee member then replies all, right? That, that's where we, we were trying to guard against doing that.
Right, right.
But I think, right. So we, 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 you know, we basically, or it could just be forwarded by the chair to the DG separately. Again, right? And that, that solves that, um, just to let people know.
That would allow reply all, though. I mean, either way, if you did do that.
Oh, versus the BCC doesn't?
You can't reply all. You can't reply all. But if everybody responded to you, then you might have a chain conversation, but.
Distribution group of the.
You all know that you can't reply all, though, so.
I mean, that's the education. As long as we don't, don't reply all, then we're okay.
We're all about that. Yeah, I, I mean, I think that's something the chair or their designee going forward could probably do. Just adapt that, so that the members know what the answer was.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I know this is technically your forum.
No.
Um, so you would suggest, Gail had actually told me this before, because I've worked in a number of districts, and this is the only district that publishes community questions that go to the DG? The only one that I've worked in has done that. And I know it was, Gail told me this before today's meeting, and I just heard you say that we follow the select board's policy on that. Is that something you're familiar with, Dorothy, that other districts? So, if a community member has a concern or a question, they may email, usually they email Dr. Dorothy, they may email any of the three of us, or all of the three of us. Sometimes Linda, sometimes many, many people on it. And then if they, if they email all of the school committee, it automatically gets published in our school committee packet. And then, we, our, our policy is that we, somebody reacts to it, and that is also published.
Mm-hmm.
At the next available. So, sometimes we get it the week of the school committee meeting, it might make it to the next meeting.
Right.
Is that something that you see in a lot of other districts?
So, if you know what one district does, you know what one district does.
Okay.
So, that, that practice varies.
Okay.
Yeah, so it was, there, we started doing that because of, the select board does it, and we were answering emails, but people were saying, you guys are not being transparent. So, we said, oh, well, that's easy, we'll just put them all in the packets once they're answered. And we try to get the answers in a timely manner, so, 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 so we try to get the, the email and the answer. Sometimes when that's taking a little bit of time to do, people will get a little bit, they're like, why didn't my email get, get in the packet?
Well, that's where I get in, like, sometimes I get multi-page questions that take literally weeks to, like, formulate thoughtful responses. And, and I think sometimes people are annoyed that it takes that long. But, because it's been public and it was posted weeks ago in a school committee packet, as a staff member, we just may not have the bandwidth to get to it immediately, because we're doing our regular day jobs too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and not that we're not trying to be transparent, I'm happy to respond, but it's not always a quick answer. It's not a Facebook post, you know, it's.
Not a tweet?
Yeah, it's not a tweet.
I mean, so to that, to that point, I think from a clarity, clarity of communication, communicate, 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 part of the response back can be, and I think generally you try to do this, but part of the response back, or whoever the new chair is, can be, we've delegated this up, this is an operational thing, da-da-da, Ms. Kelly will respond. This will not show up in the packet until Ms. Kelly's response is included, right? And so that way, they know, that way, they know, I'm not gonna look for it at the next meeting, I'm gonna look for it when I get a response from Ms. Kelly, or Ms. Dowd, or Ms. Stice, or Dr. Stice, as the case may be.
Thank you.
Right?
Yep.
That way, it's clear about when to expect a response.
Right.
Yeah, I know, I just had to correct myself.
That's along the same lines as, you know, we don't have an answer yet, but we're aware of the situation.
Yep.
It buys you some time.
Yeah.
Thank you. Right, and it, and it would help, in terms of Mrs. Angelson wondering, should I put this in the packet? I don't have the answer yet or not.
Right, right.
And then, you know, it goes in the packet with that level of, that answer from the committee member, and then it would, then the second level.
So, I think moving forward, that's something we can do operational, that between the chair and ourselves, we can make sure there is a response, even if the response is, I'm meeting with you next week, we'll discuss this further.
Right.
Or, I don't have a response right now, but I'll be working on it and we'll be in touch, or something.
I think, though, that, combined with the fact that it won't go into the packet until you have a chance to answer it, because I'm hearing about the pressure that's on you guys to do your regular jobs, and then also keep up with all of these requests. And I want you to focus, I, I'm speaking as me. I want you to be able to focus on the children, on the students, on the education, and not be constantly sidelined by the paperwork and the questions. And I think they're valid questions often.
They are, and I don't mean to imply that at all.
And I'm not getting that, but you can't do everything in a timely way and do the high-quality job that we know you always do, and not burn out.
Yeah, thank you.
Again, I think that goes back to trust, though, too. Over time, as that continues to build, as the answers continue to come out, as they continue to be published, that trust gets built. And, you know, I mean, parents are important, we, they're our constituents.
Yeah, totally.
Right, so we need to make sure we don't ignore them, and we're not ignoring them. You guys spend the right time spending the answers, so let's just make sure we're doing both things.
I, can I, I, I agree with that, but I think we're also in a society that's used to having answers like this.
True.
And we're spoiled, and we're privileged, and it can't always happen that way. And it doesn't take very much to turn it around into a negative, right now, it feels like. Because, I mean, just taking an example of the override, and how well everybody worked together to educate our community, and then, like, it, it was immediately to the negative after one thing was checked off. It just, I, I, I wanna protect our staff. I'm a bridge, and I wanna be listening, but I also wanna acknowledge the job that our staff is doing, and empower them to do that job in the best way they can.
But I think, I, if I, if I'm hearing what you're saying, that you think it's more of a negative to say, the answer will take a while than to not answer?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
That's the, the, the answer will take a while goes immediately to the asker.
Yep.
To the questioner. But the long answer will take a while, as said in that.
Yep.
And that, that, um, sometimes turns into a negative. I, I want it coupled with not going into the packet until the answer is there as well.
Oh, I see, yep.
Because I think the public gets judgmental, and it plants a seed that festers.
So, you're sort of reinforcing that, yeah, okay, got it.
Sorry.
That horse is dead now, shall we move on?
Communicate, communicate, communicate.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a little executive decision here to skip forward to looking at your operating protocols, because I think from this discussion, I have a pretty good idea that you have a pretty good understanding of, of the, the nuts and bolts of the legal roles and responsibilities, or? I can.
I think so.
Okay, so I'm gonna just whiz through a few slides here. Oh, I'm gonna get to this one, though. So, um, in terms of thinking about the, the role of a school committee, and how can a school committee be as effective as possible? And, um, there's this idea of, of a model of balanced governance. Um, so, if you're on one side, I wish I knew how to make the arrow, like, do this, I'll figure it out. That where, a committee can make uninformed delegation. We've hired the superintendent, let it, let that person go, we trust him to do their job, and not really pay attention. That can get committees in a lot of trouble. Um, but then, on the other side, there's, there's micro, micromanagement, where you're too much in the weeds, where, um, the, the questions and the, um, requirements are restrictive enough that you're in, in a, in a sense inhibiting the superintendent from doing the job. So, you wanna find that sort of sweet spot of informed oversight, where you're getting the information you need to be in that governance role, in that big-picture what and why fifty thousand-foot role. And you're paying attention, so that you, you're doing, that you're doing the appropriate evaluation of the, the high-level work, but, um, not, not ceding your responsibilities to the superintendent or taking on the responsibilities of the superintendent. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Good.
So, um, you have operating protocols, or at least draft operating protocols. Um, and I just wanna review quickly the reason why we talk about having protocols as being a practice of good governance. There are a set of ground rules that are created by the group that's gonna use them. Um, I can't walk in and hand you a set of protocols and say, here, follow these, and life will be great. Because every group has their own way of working together, their own personalities on the group, the, their own issues that they may be dealing with. Um, so it's really a, a, a document that should be flexible enough to be sort of changed as the group changes, um, and created by the group that's going to be using them. Um, it's a set of preconditions that enables you to work together, that, I, I think of it as you've decided how the work will get done, so you can really dig in on what the work is. Um, and it can be used for self-evaluation. It can be one of the tools that you use to step back and say, you know, this is how we said we'd work as a team. Um, are we doing it? Um, and if not, what, what corrections do we need to make, either in the protocols, because we got them wrong, or the way we're working to follow the protocols? Sometimes, when we're talking about protocols, people want, don't want them because they're restrictive, or they feel they're going to be restrictive. But what we've seen is that, um, instead of creating, a, 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 creating an environment that stifles dissent or stifles free speech, when operating protocols are in place, they actually facilitate good communication, facilitate a good flow of information. So, they actually do the opposite of the things that people are worried that they might do. Um, and certainly, um, we're not trying to limit communication beyond, um, as Mr. Y says, the way that we're limited anyway, um, by the open meeting law and communication. Um, so, the way, you know, that we talk about an effective use of protocols is, once they're developed, once you've decided what they're gonna be, um, announce that you've adopted, actually vote to adopt them, announce that you have to the community, put them on your website, or push them out, if that's, if that's your choice. Um, make them available to the people that, um, are, um, going to be watching your meetings or attending your meetings, so that you're, you're saying to everyone, not just to yourselves, you're saying to everyone, this is how we've decided we're going to work. This is how we've agreed that we're going to work. You can do a check-in several times a year. Um, once they're, um, you can also, you know, after you, around the time you reorganize, um, apropos of tonight, um, just, you know, do that check-in, recommit to them. Um, and then, when you have them, you have something in writing that allows everyone to, hopefully have the same understanding of how you work. So, when you get, if you get, if and when you get a little bit off track, you've got something to point back to and say, you know, this is what we agreed to, so can we get back to it? As opposed to not having it in writing, and you might be sitting there thinking, you know, I don't think this is the way we should be working, but you really don't have anything to point to. So, it's a lot easier, I think, to get back on track if you get off track, when you have something to go back to. Um, so with that, um, you have some protocols. Sometimes, um, what we do when we're reviewing the protocols is sort of go through section by section, um, and have a little discussion about, you know, do people sort of have the same understanding? Has it been working, or do people see any changes that they would like to see made in the various sections of the protocols?
Yeah, I think we, we could go through it section by section. I just wanna say that this is something that was started a number of years ago, and I think Ms. Sprowski actually worked on it with our board members and, um, Mrs. Presser. Um, and it was, um, used by other boards, even though we, we never, we never actually took a formal vote on it. That was back in 2016. We didn't, John could not find.
Where is it in the back, or did you bring it?
The votes. We reviewed it at our meeting in September. So, um, at any rate, this is, as Dorothy said, the board makeup has changed, uh, since then. Um, and so the goal, the goal tonight was to review this and be able to, um, accept that. Um, I'm, in, in the dialogue, if there's changes, I just would hope that we can actually get this done, like, at our next meeting, because it's something that I think we've been trying to do for a couple of years. Um, and we added the signature, the signatures were added, um, that was something we'd seen some other, um, school committees do. And I think it's really a good practice, because it's a reminder that, you know, in April, after elections, that's, there needs to be a dialogue with the new committee members, too. Um, and really making sure that those folks understand the protocol. So, anyway, I think we, we could start through it, um, if people have some comments or feedback on sort of the, the first section on the role, um, or actually the beginning of it.
Yeah, the first paragraph, the first cert paragraph.
You just say, right, the members of the committee, we accept the high honor and trust that has been placed in us to ensure that the Reading, that Reading students receive the best education policy possible to that, and we hereby commit to the following in the conduct of our business. And then this first part really draws from, um, the MAS C, well, the information and policy on role, on the role. But also somewhat about our district, um, that we work towards a continuous improvement in teaching and learning by clearly defining success, success in district goal-setting, assuring accountability in the superintendent evaluation process, developing policies that support our vision, advocating for the needs, interests, and achievement of all students in our district, identifying and advocating for the appropriate resources to advance the mission and vision of the Reading Public Schools. Just, and then, the school committee members understand that only, that only the school committee as a whole has authority. Individual members may not act unilaterally. While debate and principled dissent are encouraged, all school committee members expect to support and uphold the decision of the majority once a vote is taken. And then, the last paragraph in that section, the school committee recognizes the importance of working, collaborating with town officials, residents, and other stakeholders to improve our schools, and will actively seek ways to enlist their support for our efforts. So, that was, I'm not sure if people have comments on that section, or?
I mean, the only thing I would, I would say we talk about is something we've already talked about a little bit, and it says clearly defining success in, in district goal-setting. I think there should be more in there about the collaboration of goal-setting, and there should be more in there about what makes a goal a good goal. In particular, and I think even MAS C recommends it, and I know the superintendent review process recommends it, the acronym is SMART. We need to incorporate that here to make sure that we can, you know, measure it. We know that it's achievable, we know that it's realistic, we know that it's appropriate, et cetera. We need to, I think there's some, some terminology there that would be useful to incorporate into that. I know this isn't supposed to be a be-all and end-all.
Right.
Um, but that is fundamentally, I think, one of our biggest major improvements, in my mind. But I am just one person, so.
So, some, add, to add something that, that, that builds to that, the collaboration with the superintendent.
So, something, can I, I can't stop myself from wordsmithing a little bit, so. Um, clearly define success in district goal-setting by working collaboratively with the superintendent to set, um, SMART goals for district improvement?
Something like that.
That, I, um.
It hits the intent, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Doesn't have to be perfect, but that hits the intent.
Yeah.
Yeah, clearly defining success, and you could even say SMART, um, in establishing SMART district goals collab, with collaboratively, working collaboratively with the superintendent.
Yep, that's fine, too. It's even cleaner, I like it.
So, my question is that, um, does this allow us to encompass those goals that aren't necessarily able to be quantified? I mean.
So, I, I, so my question would be, um, when we think about, um, sorry. When we think about having, um, uh, operating protocols, we don't want them to be, it's sort of like, a little bit like policy, you don't want them to be too narrow. My other comment would be that if you're thinking about the, the, like, the district improvement plan, those aren't going to be SMART goals. Um, so, maybe something along goals at the appropriate, uh, level of specificity. Uh, you know, something that differentiates between not all goals, those, those visionary goals aren't gonna be SMART. They're gonna be more aspirational. And then you do, in your annual goals, you want those to be SMART. Make sense?
I hear what you're saying. I don't think that aligns with the documentation for the superintendent review process.
No, because the documentation for the superintendent review process does not, is not the district improvement plan. It's the goals specifically for the superintendent.
Okay.
We, we could certainly, though, you, if we, if you put the SMART in there, then I think you have to have the broad, put the statement of aspirational, too, right? So, clearly defining both aspirational and SMART goals for the district.
As appropriate.
Mm-hmm. Clearly defining.
How about, uh, something that says, you know, part of the role there is, uh, annually meet, to collaborate over, over goals to be, to be voted on at a subsequent business meeting. So, I, you know, I, I would want a meeting to discuss everything. Kinda everyone leaves, when everyone, you know, predominantly superintendent leaves, kinda with marching orders as to what we wanna see come back that night that we vote on them. You follow, is that?
I think it's. I think it's a little specific for the protocol, but to capture the idea of, you know, both clearly defining both aspirational and SMART goals for the district as appropriate by working collaboratively with the superintendent. And maybe there's another piece to that that needs to be there.
I think this, I think one of the really good takeaways from this discussion was an interest in reexamining how we do goal setting and talking about doing Saturday workshops. But I think that's now beginning to, now we're wanting to put that into the protocols.
Right.
Where it maybe doesn't, like, I think we're going to do that. There seems to be consensus around that. I don't know that it needs to be in here specifically.
I do like the idea of adding working collaboratively with.
Yes, yeah.
You gotta, I think something has to be in there 'cause it fell off the table. And if it's in the protocols, it's not gonna fall off the table.
It's the same intent with policies, right? It's in the policy, it should be done, it should not just fall away and not be done.
Would that go under role or under meeting though? Would be my question.
I didn't read all the way, I was.
The meeting seems to be more how we conduct ourselves. I think it would go here.
I really feel, I feel, I feel like I get rushed into, I don't want them to be at a meeting. I wanna have already done all of that work before, 'cause I feel like I get rushed in to every year. It's gotta get done in that meeting, 'cause that's on the agenda for that night. And there just, there isn't enough dialogue on it. I'm trying to get away from that, I guess, so.
Can I make a suggestion about where that could maybe go? Maybe under agendas. So it says, the first bullet is creating a yearly agenda based on district goals with the understanding that the agenda will evolve as each year progresses. Could we put a second bullet under that that says annual goal setting will include two meetings? One, I don't know exactly what it says.
And I'm not trying to create more work for, I think it's just.
No, you want it in there.
Slowing down the process so we can think about it.
Collaborating, it's collaborating.
I wouldn't even wanna restrict it to say two meetings, 'cause then if it goes to three or four.
Right, right, as needed.
Yeah.
I have sufficient time, allowing sufficient time. How about?
And I think it's a two-way street. I think that's gonna help the superintendent.
Definitely.
Because, you know, he's getting our feedback in advance. And it doesn't turn into, you know, us trying to wordsmith something at nine thirty at night, you know.
So I, for the first part, I have a sort of a rephrasing of that first bullet as clearly defining both aspirational and SMART goals for the district as appropriate by working collaboratively with the superintendent. And working collaboratively, by working collaboratively with the superintendent.
Can I just say something? So I think Jean started to say it, and I was waiting to see if you threw that in. But I think when, when you do district goals, whether they're annual, which they have to be done annually, most districts do like three-year goals, and then each year, you're sort of annually updating. When you do the three-year goals particularly, you have a series of meetings, leadership meetings, where you're like, basically, you know, it's like fish stew. We're putting everything in, and then we're gonna focus on concentrating on the big things, right?
At the district leadership level.
At the district leadership level. It sounds like that kind of meeting needs to happen on a Saturday too. So that when we collaborate, you bring sort of your fish stew items, the leadership team has their fish stew items, and together, we kind of take all of those things and say, alright, we can't have everything in it, because it'll be, you know, too much, and we won't really achieve our realistic goals, which is part of the SMART acronym. But we can really take out these key points. It sounds like that Saturday meeting part is, and it may not even need a Saturday meeting every year. But it might need it to get sort of the whole scaffolding of the three-year picture. And then annually, we can have a collaborative workshop here. But it sounds like that part is kind of missing.
Why don't we, if we said that under the agendas, something along the line of like assure, assure that appropriate meetings are scheduled for around this process. Around the three-year and annual goal setting.
I like that.
I would just say meetings or workshops.
Oh, I was gonna say with, through a workshop model.
There's a different connotation of a meeting versus a workshop.
Yeah, I think a workshop model sounds great.
I, I love what you said, Ms. Kelly, because, Dr. Kelly?
No, Mrs.
Mrs. Terry.
Okay. My biggest title right now.
Because I feel like, I feel like that's been part of what's missing is getting to know each other and a leadership team and a working relationship. I'd love to hear people's rationale for the goals that they are prioritizing, how they come to it. Just listening to that conversation would help me grow and evolve with the leadership team so that I wouldn't feel like I'm interrogating as opposed to collaborating.
And it could be, it could be joint at times, or it could be even separate. And then sort of the district leadership team kind of weaves that together, right? And says, alright, here is what we heard loud and clear, 'cause you're our conduit to the community, right? You might hear things that, you know, the leadership team doesn't hear, or it may not understand fully. So I think those things, but then it has to be fleshed out to manageable goals. We can't have forty-four district goals.
If you have too many, you don't have any.
Yeah, there you go.
I was just gonna say that.
I put this together, you guys try this out. Assure that appropriate workshop-style sessions are scheduled for three-year and annual goals where the school committee and superintendent, together with appropriate district leadership, can collaborate.
Sounds good to me.
I like it.
And where were you putting that, sorry? That one would go in the agendas. 'Cause it's, 'cause it has to be set, you've got to, we've got, that's scheduling the agendas, right? And the first one was in the roles. Basically replacing the first bullet in the roles. I think the other bonus of that process is that we'd be able to learn the positives and the challenges in developing the goals. So we're not only getting a presentation, a finished product. We're seeing it evolve, which would be really.
It helps everybody. Staff and, you know, really.
It does. I think it would allow us to be a better bridge to the community. We'd have more insight into how the goals are set.
Right.
And that means more ownership, and that means better defense of them.
Yeah, I don't think you could, we could always commit to have the whole leadership team there, but we could.
Yeah, that's what I said, I think superintendent with appropriate members of it, right? 'Cause it is up to him to decide.
Yep.
I mean, we can, we can say what we like or expect.
I'll bring the donut.
I'll bring the coffee.
Okay, so do you wanna, anybody, we can, we don't have to read the entire thing. People just wanna, if there's specific areas that they wanted to focus on. And just, I'll say that the planning the meetings not to extend beyond two and a half hours. I think we try to do that, I mean, we, and we try to stay, we're off right now. Supposed to be eight twenty-five, so. Anyway, but we did, over time, really come to the fact that you really don't wanna plan a meeting that you think has an agenda over two and a half hours.
Yes.
So it doesn't mean that the meetings don't end up going a little longer, but.
Is there anything we wanna put in there about frequency at all? I don't know if the answer is yes or no. I wanna know this year, it was tailored back significantly. In the past, it was more aggressive, maybe twice a month. There has been some community feedback that there are maybe some things that we could have highlighted or brought up that we haven't been able to bring up because of the schedule as it is, being more or less once a month. So I'm just curious. I don't have an answer necessarily, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, I think, I just think one of the challenges has, was from the previous year was the whole burden of the override and all the meetings. And then we still, if you look at it, they've changed a little bit the municipal processes. So even the tentative calendar has a lot of the, you know, financial form, which is really important for us to be in. So I think that, I think that it needs to be, you know, the creating a yearly agenda based on the district goals and priorities, right, is the key. The chair is trying to, you're trying to do that to make sure you can get the job done. So, you know, I don't, I don't think we, I don't think saying something specifically about frequency is necessarily good. I think we all can, should be, the chair does it, but we all can have input to the chair to say, you know, oh, here's the calendar, and couldn't we put one more meeting in this month? Like, I'd rather have it scheduled and then say, we don't need it, take it off my calendar. So I think that, that's like sort of our process. I think that it's, sorry, it's helpful too. I was following those discussions on Facebook, and I was thinking, oh, have they seen my calendar? Because they're saying we haven't met, but I've been at three meetings a week. So they weren't necessarily school committee meetings, but they were necessarily school committee responsibilities meetings. And so the months that we didn't have two school committee meetings a month, we were at multiple meetings other than that. And so I think that what's happened, at least in this calendar that was here, is that those other meetings are listed as well. So that people will know that the meetings are happening, they just might not be a school committee meeting. They're a collaborative meeting, as our protocols say, with the rest of the town. So.
Well, maybe you wanna add that caveat with that yearly agenda statement and say, creating a yearly agenda based on district goals with the understanding that the agenda will evolve as the year progresses, and mindful of the many other community-based meetings and townwide, you know, activities that are integral to running the school district. I mean, we, we agree, I mean, we went, there was like three weeks off, and people were like, where have you been? And I was like, we had seven meetings in the last three weeks. Like, you know, I mean, it's a lot. So I think you do try to be mindful of it, but I heard that too. People like, well, you haven't had a school committee meeting, you know, for three weeks. And I was like, we had seven in that last month, you know, between town meeting and community forums and.
I don't know, Gil probably knows all of them by heart, but I just go where they tell me.
Ninety percent of them.
Yeah. I just go where they tell me.
I mean, I think, but to the point that Dorothy put out before is if, I don't think we've published this before, right? So this is.
Yeah, no.
Where, no, nobody outside the school committee is.
It was in a packet.
In a packet maybe, but as something on the website like our policy.
Oh, wasn't posted.
This is the protocol the school committee uses.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Right? If we have something to say, well, this is our protocol, this is what we're doing. We're not, we're aware of the fact that we have to go to FinCom meetings sometimes, the fact that we have town meetings sometimes, the fact that this. And so we're trying to make sure we're respectful. Yes, we're volunteers, and they have day jobs, right? So we're trying to be respectful while still getting the business done.
Exactly.
Right?
And I think that the key is that we're not, we're not just gonna have meetings so that people see us every two weeks. But we will have meetings if there's something that, you know, we'll add meetings if there's something that needs to be discussed.
So I can add to that, that, you know, yearly agenda based on district goals and priorities with the understanding that the agenda will evolve as the year progresses, and mindful of the municipal board and board committee and liaison commitments. Of the school committee, really, and staff. So I can add that to that bullet.
One more question in terms of that, just, and I'm not trying to take us long, I'm just trying to make sure we have the conversation about it. And maybe this is best addressed to the three of you, really. You know, it's one thing to say that we're having meetings to go through district goals, and, you know, we have Mrs. Boynton Com, we have the elementary student, elementary school principals com, et cetera. My perspective, though, is that we don't hear enough about what else is going on in education overall. What are the, what are the key themes and trends that we should be aware of as a school committee? What else is going on that is potentially changing the landscape? We do hear some things.
You mean generally, yeah.
Sorry, we get updates from MASC every month that have a lot of that information in them. Education Week, I mean, we all subscribe to different things that we look at.
Yep.
Yeah.
Bring it to the tables. Bring it to the chair and say, hey, can we take a look at X, Y, and Z? And have somebody in the district that's an expert in that area look at it and report back.
I'm okay with that. I would even say that maybe on the agenda itself, for the, you know, if there is a, hey, here's an item I read about that I'm very curious about. You know, just the fact that we have the public conversation about it, going back to the point about, are we communicating? Are we having the public conversations about these things, right? I mean, I could probably rattle off four or five things that we haven't discussed that are really hot topics in the education world right now, that I would love to just.
Be more macro trends.
Some of them are macro, yeah, some of them are others, right? I mean, if it's, if it's on.
Can I just insert that you do have the soliciting input on future agenda items already there?
I was going to say, I think that's why we added.
So I think it kind of would fall under that.
Okay.
And the other thing that, the reason, I mean, the reason that we suggest having that yearly agenda based on goals is so that you maintain a focus and don't get sidetracked too many different ways. So that, you know, oftentimes that's why when we're talking about doing a year-long agenda, focusing it on your goals so that you do stay focused. And, you know, and don't squirrel, squirrel, squirrel all year with different things that are coming up.
I hear what you're saying, Ty, I agree. My, my only concern is I don't wanna put something out there so that we have someone from the staff preparing a report on something that is taken away from their day-to-day. So I think it should be more of a, a roundtable discussion amongst ourselves and not expect staff to do a lot of research or whatever. And maybe get, maybe give them some takeaways from that roundtable discussion. But I wouldn't wanna put that work on there.
I'm on the same page, and that's where I was going, sorry, Dr. Doctor. I'm on the same page, and that's where I was going. I think that goes back to my feedback as well about communicate, communicate, communicate. Can we actually have discussions about some of these things? Maybe there's no action, right? It's our meeting, it's not the public's meeting, but it's our meeting. If you're in a business meeting, sometimes you're just talking about what else is going on around, right? What else should we be aware of? What else are, you know, I don't wanna have, I mean, there is a point of having blinders on to achieve the goal, but you also have to make sure that you're not gonna get hit by a Mack truck on the side because you've got those blinders on. And so maybe there's a point, and it maybe doesn't go in the protocol, and maybe this is the wrong time to talk about it. But if we were able to structure our agenda appropriately in the meeting such that there is a, you know.
Free-form fifteen minutes.
Yeah, towards the end, that's it.
But we have to be careful that there's not a voting topic that the public would have to be aware of as well. So we have to be, so we have to walk a tricky line, I'm aware of that. I'm just saying, I think it would be something that would be interesting as a committee to discuss some of these topics.
Right, and, and right, I think Dorothy was highlighting that that comes up at, you know, at the end of the meeting, it's future agenda, like to, I mean, you can talk to the chair, or, and say, I wanna get this on there. Or it can come up, hey, as a future agenda item, it looks like maybe our next meeting has a light agenda. Could we do this, right?
Or you could periodically through the year, schedule a workshop or something to just bat around.
Right.
Have an educational roundtable, that's what I was thinking.
Yep.
Or even in our reports, I mean, we usually talk about what's going on in Reading, per se. But we could certainly keep in mind towards, I mean, there's so many things that we're talking about and keeping track of. We don't always share them with you, but we could start thinking about that. Like, I'm not saying we'll do extra work, Jack, thank you for that. But as we say, gee, we got this grant, because, as you know, this is a current trend in education, that's why we applied for it, or da-da-da-da-da.
That actually brings up a great point, thank you for saying that. Because at the MASC training, this is something also I thought was very interesting. They specifically mentioned that school committee should vote to accept the grants. And we do not do that.
Vote to accept what?
Vote to accept grants, because there are usually stipulations that go with grants, staffing level issues, and other things along those lines. So it's great that we get all these grants and we apply for all of them.
Was MASC specific about what type of grants, were they private grants?
Nope, any type of grant.
Federal grants?
Yeah, that's legislation, yeah.
And we can tighten that process. I think what we do is we present them as part of the budget.
Yeah, and some of the big, like the entitlement grants through the budget process.
We vote them in the budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Not all of them come via the budget, though. Some of them come later. We usually get notified.
We've presented them every quarter. I've come back and said, these are the additional, we can add a step to officially vote on them, but.
We can totally do that, that's easy.
But we've been increasing that process throughout to provide updates throughout the year as we're getting each.
Sometimes we have to just watch, you know, there's sometimes there's things that, do they require it, the timing, right? Like, so you need to do something, and would it be like the vote of the committee would delay something? No.
We would apply anyway, and then as, as Mr. Wise suggested, once we get it, in a way, like a donation.
Right.
Yeah, like a consent agenda.
Oh, I think that's what we could talk about, adding them to the consent agenda. That's what I thought.
That's easy.
If there's anything in there that you see that's funny from a staffing perspective, or concerns, or goes off of the district goals for some crazy reason, it's probably not gonna happen.
And we present all the staffing as part of the budget, ongoing staffing changes and grant staffing. We do that annually as part of the budget process.
Sorry.
So I also have shared some questions about Mr. Wise's topic, on our responsibility on the school. on the school committee is not just to the district, but also to be aware of what's happening statewide legislatively, nationally, and how that's, be prepared and proactive about how that's going to impact our students in our district. And some of that we can get by reading. Some of that is offered to us through the Blue Ribbon, through the other work.
The Redding Institute.
The Redding Institute. I still have to answer that. And so I think that the invitations to take part in that are really important.
Parent university, there's a lot of them, yep.
Yeah. And also, we've gotten invitations to, from MASK to participate in the forums that set the policy and that discuss the state and national issues. And this past year, we actually voted to appoint someone to go and represent our school committee. But I sort of view that as a responsibility that we haven't really been proactive on, and that it would be good to add that expectation. There's MASK Day on the Hill, there's.
I think it's a general role, under the roles. Is there something, Dorothy, that you would see that would fit, like, under the, the role, you know, as part of our role as school committee members, it's to be educated ourselves, and there's multiple ways to do that, you know, around trends in education or best practices in school committees, right? We've talked about a whole number of them, right, that you could, you could do to stay engaged. I, I think, I think it's a little dangerous to prescribe specifically for the committee members, but.
I've been to Day on the Hill. You sit around in Brad Jones or Jason Lewis, I mean, the office. You talk about everything, everyone goes away, nothing ever gets done. I mean, I just, you know, and every, you get your picture taken. I just, you know, I mean, I don't think you can mandate.
Is there some general?
There, I mean, there, there are division meetings and other forums to get information, you know.
I like, you had some very broad language. Under role, I wouldn't object to a bullet that says, stay informed and engaged on educational trends at the state and national level. And what informed and engaged means to us individually is an individual decision.
But I'd include engaged, not just informed.
I did, yep.
That's what was.
Educational.
You did.
Stay informed and engaged on educational trends.
But it was talked about just educated on.
Right.
I think engaged in advocating for.
It doesn't have to be MASK Day on the Hill.
At the local, well, at the state and national. Okay, so under roles, we could add, stay informed and engaged on educational trends at the state and national level, or at least the state level.
Yep.
National.
And national level.
Yep.
Yeah. We were at forty percent funding.
Okay. All right, so do we have other, we sort of were down through meetings?
Yeah, the one thing under meetings, respect staff and fellow committee members at all times. I'm going to say, respect community members, staff, and fellow committee members at all times.
Yep.
I like that addition.
Respect.
Can I, can I ask a que, I, I missed, I, I meant to ask about back on the agenda thing. What does that statement mean, that business meetings held in public, not public meetings? I don't get what, why?
It, it means, Dorothy, you.
So, so that you're required to hold your meet, your meeting is in public, not with the public. So it's not like town meeting, where anyone there is able to participate. You're really doing it in front of the community, not with the community at every meeting.
Unless it's a public hearing.
Unless it, unless it's a public hearing, which is different. And that's why you have specific times in your agenda where the pub, where you've delineated that it's time for the public to be able to comment.
But we do allow.
You can always, at the discretion of the chair, you can always allow, yes, but, but it's, it's at the discretion of the committee and the chair, not an expectation that the public is going to become, come and be able to participate the way they would at town meeting, where they can raise their hand and say, I want to talk.
Okay. So just going back to John, are we all on the same page?
Oh, yeah, I added, respect community members, staff, and fellow committee members at all times. So I added that in. Can I ask another question? And I don't know what the answer is. It's going back to the role. There are lots of opportunities to engage our students in the learning that we're doing, in the advocating, advocacy work that we can do. MASK invites students to go with school committee members.
Today on the Hill.
Sorry.
Today on the Hill.
There's also a school, a student.
Sorry, had to.
A student day at MASK, where students can get involved. But we really haven't, we have an amazing student who's been, we've had the amazing students over the years, and more even came during the summer, which I'm just so impressed and, and appreciative of. So do we want something in our protocol that makes us more aware and actively engaging students in our process?
I think that goes towards operations more than policy, and I think it starts leaning out of our purview.
Yep.
But we have a student that.
Right, right. I would.
I think it's generally a good idea, so I like the concept. But I agree that we hire a superintendent who oversees the staff, and their entire mission is around students. So that's where that sort of happens. I also think that the operating protocols as written are very much around the three responsibilities of the school committee: budget, policy, and superintendent oversight and goal setting. So I feel like if you start getting into what we do for students directly as a committee, that might get a little bit outside of.
I'm not sure that, sorry, don't mean to speak, but I think what you're talking about is somehow the committee more directly engaging students in your work. Is that?
Um, yes, but I'm not saying they, more of them come to every meeting.
No, no, but.
I'm saying that there are opportunities for students to give us, to participate in a meeting or go with us to an advocacy, a state or national event. And if it's not a, a stated goal, then it falls to the wayside, I see.
So can I, I, I think John might be a little bit more on the track of it's a little bit more of an operational thing. It's more, if it's something you want to do, then, these aren't goals, these are protocols, right? So if you want to, if you want to do that, it'd be something that you, as a school committee, could set, we're going to set a goal this year of trying to find different ways to engage student input in our decision-making, as opposed to putting it in the protocols.
Right, right. So it would be embedded, there would be a higher-level goal that would drive that action.
Yep.
Right.
That makes sense. Thank you. Okay, just.
I have one more before you go to decision making.
On the meetings?
Yeah, okay.
Oh, on the, yes, on the meetings, the last bullet. I'm an electronic guy. I like to take my notes, as Dorothy is, on a computer. I have respectfully shut mine down, but it was here for me to take notes.
Yep.
And that's by this protocol, unallowed. So, yes, it's a little bit of a selfish request. Maybe we can, maybe we can trend it more towards.
How about use of technology should be consistent with the purpose of the meeting, right? Right, use of technology should just be, use of technology during the meeting should be consistent with the purpose of the meeting.
And the word unobtrusive, I think, should stay. You know, you shouldn't have a huge screen that you can hide behind.
So, I mean.
That is as big as she'd allow.
But she's presenting, so presenter.
Absolutely, absolutely. Very different.
There are always going to be one.
That one's there, right, but.
Yeah.
It's a little different than.
Usage of technology should.
This is our role, not the presenter's role.
Yes.
I've been in past school committees where there's been a laptop at everyone's station, and that, that, you know, I think that's probably where that came from, right? It was, but I don't think.
There are committees that have, that get their packets electronically, and they all sit there with a laptop in front of them, and they're.
Check an email and.
Well, no, I mean, that's, that's what this is, that's what this is, I think, meant to, that if you're, if you're using it, if you're using it, it's to engage in the meeting, not to check your email, not to watch the Bruins game while the meeting's going on.
Or not to get public input.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's, that's a violation of the open meeting law.
We could just say that usage of technology should be consistent with the purpose of the meeting, and be as unobtrusive as possible, and be, you know, I mean, and, well, it's, it's more, and, and not cause a distraction, is basically what we're looking for, right?
Getting public input on your technology during the meeting? Someone's participating in the meeting, but not publicly.
That's violation.
That I get. I just didn't understand where, I got overwhelmed by information.
Unobtrusive is a hard thing to say necessarily. I would almost argue that, you know, we get this in email, we should be able to not have it print out and waste how many pieces of paper and trees and things that are just going to go in the recycling bin over there, if we all have the ability to look at them. Right? I don't need this. I have it all in my, it's all electronic. And I've, it's my personal laptop. Thank you very much. I just bought it for this purpose.
I was asking. Okay, because I can't use my work laptop, and I don't have a personal laptop anymore. So I think if we just say, the usage of technology should be consistent with the purpose of the meeting and respectful.
Jean?
Yes.
Do we need to say something about that open meeting law? It's not to committee, it's just assumed?
No.
I think you've, you've said it by, but you've said it by saying the opposite in, right?
Right, consistent with the purpose of the meeting and respectful.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, so that's good. All right, so that's, I have, so that's, I have five changes. We're doing really good. Okay, so then we have decision-making. Okay, information requests.
The only thing on decision-making, it might make sense, and maybe our English teacher over there can help.
She wrote it.
One, one could say that superintendent's recommendation leads to superintendent's qualitative and quantitative data, which leads to superintendent's research, which leads to superintendent's public input. Maybe it might make sense to say superintendent's recommendation, and then other things as well.
So can I suggest superintendent's recommendation, comma, along with quantitative data, research public? That sort of clarifies.
That works for me.
Happy to help.
Yep.
Okay, and then information requests. I think that's pretty straightforward.
Mm-hmm.
It's, can I just say, the information requests, I, I fully support not expecting an answer if we ask the day before or the two days before. The challenge is that we get our packet two days before. So questions arise, for me, when I'm reading the packet. But I don't consider giving the staff a day to answer my questions adequate time. So, and, and the problem for me is that then I feel badly asking the question, and then feeling like things have to be tailored to give me an answer or whatever. Whereas if I were just to send my questions and not necessarily expect an answer before the school committee meeting, people will be aware of my question.
I, I think that this is, this, first of all, this doesn't only apply to packets, but I think that that, that should be done because, and I, I notice I don't see it here, we sort of had the, like, no surprise rule, which I know a lot of committees do. So I think, Jean.
Yeah, I think, I hear that concern, because you get the packet, and you've been reading it, and you've got a bunch of questions. I, but I think that the type of question for me drives, so I've sometimes gotten a memo from Mrs. Dowd with financial stuff, and I have a question about it, and it's extremely specific. It's one question. I know she's going to know the answer like this. So I'll email Dr. Dorothy and say, could I get an answer to this question? He forwards it. Like, if, you sort of have a sense of, if, and then there have been other packets where, actually, this hasn't happened recently, but I have actually sent Dr. Dorothy an email saying, I have, I'm, these are phone calls, like, these are the seven concerns I will be bringing up at open session for discussion. So there's sort of like a heads up. I, I have a lot of questions and confusion about this, so I've got, I'm going to be bringing them up. So he's not surprised, but it isn't asking permission. It's like.
Right.
Heads up. This is, and, and if we need, if we, as a committee, need another meeting, then we need another meeting. If, if we all have a lot of questions and a lot of concerns, and we discuss and debate for an hour, and at the end of it, we're sort of like, not there yet, then, then, then the chair says, we're not ready to vote on this.
I completely agree with that. My, I just want that to be clear, that when I have those questions and I'm giving a heads up about those concerns, that I'm not expecting an answer or, and that I will be bringing it up.
Yep.
It's not a permission. It's a, I.
I don't think everything should be, and I think you said this, I don't think everything should be orchestrated where, you know, all the questions before, you know, there's a lot of questions that can be answered if I asked right now, you know. So I think it just, use, use, a person should use their own common sense. If they know a question's going to require a lot of research, then they, then they send that in. But otherwise, just ask your questions on the fly.
That's the point, is like, the simple questions that come out of the left field.
I think it's important that those are live.
But if you have, like, a series of questions, when we're, and just having recently come to central office, role, it is a little nerve-wracking going into school committee, especially if you're presenting, and not a hundred percent sure what the questions are going to be, right? Because you've researched it, researched it. Gail does a great job with that. That's part of why we bring our computers, so we have access to multiple things. Sometimes it, it is really great to have a heads up to say, I have more questions. I will be asking them under this vein, even if you don't specifically say.
Yeah.
Then we really know, like, I have that document from March at, on my laptop, ready to go. It's, it is hard. This is open meeting, it's filmed. You don't want to be fumbling with this.
And I would say we also reserve the right to say, we'll get back to, which is, that was my platform in the interview, if I don't know. I reserve the right to say, grade eight question, I will get back to.
And I love that you would do that. I would send them in and get a call the next morning that was trying to answer them all. And that's not what I'm asking for. I just want to give a heads up.
Can I add a few things here? So I think some, sometimes the staff wants to be responsive and give an answer. But I think a lot of times, if, particularly if it's a question about something coming up in a meeting, it's going to be of more benefit if you wait till the meeting to either fold it into your presentation or answer the question, because then everybody has the same information. And, you know, particularly when they're making a decision, everybody should have the same body of information to make the decision from. But I think the idea about getting questions ahead, a lot of times, is so the staff can be as prepared as possible, so the meeting can be as productive as possible, so that maybe you don't need to say, we didn't get all our questions answered, we're going to have to put off a decision. I think sometimes committees get so nervous about getting their questions in ahead of time, that, that they, a question occurs to them at the meeting, and they get afraid to ask, because I, I might surprise them. But the, the intent of the no surprises is really no gotchas, right? Again, it goes to the trust and the communication. So it's, and I think, so, you know, if you think of a question during the meeting, and you know they may not, there's, you know, hundreds of respectful ways to ask the question that make it not a gotcha. And I think that, you know, that's the, the thing to be thinking about.
It's all about the terminology used, the way in which.
The tone, the terminology, the.
And setting the expectations when you send them in, that your, the expectation isn't that you get the answer beforehand.
Well, I, I think the way Jean phrased it is, you know, I'm going to have these questions. So you're sort of, you're, you're saying right there, I'm not expecting it right away. I mean, I've called and gotten, you know, asked a question that I, when I've gotten a packet, and someone will call me up with the answer. I'm like, that's great, I wasn't expecting that. I'm going to ask it again at the meeting, because I want everybody else to hear it, too. But they knew it was coming, and they were prepared for it.
Right, and I, I think the, the good point, like, as, as you just mentioned, right, it gives Jean or Gail, I mean, Jen or Gail or Chris, the opportunity to have, like, the memo, the backup information, right, like, open on your laptop, knowing that there's going to be some dialogue in this area, and you have the information so that you can have a better dialogue. So I think that that's, that's a good idea. And I think being able to, so sometimes the questions would come up, make, a committee member may ask a question, and you may decide to include that information in the presentation, right? And, you know, sometimes, oh, you know, this question was asked, or you say, you know what, we're not going to include it in the presentation, just ask the question, right? That's fine. So I think those are the approaches. But. But, so I think that that, that covers that, I don't know that we need to change anything there.
Nope. Nope, it was a practice question.
Communication. So, I think that, I don't know that we need to put that in here, but I think the, we can certainly add the practice that the chair can BCC, the committee mem, the DG committee, on the responses, potentially, that would be up to the chair.
I was under the impression that we were told by legal that we couldn't do it, that's what I was told.
I feel like I heard that too.
All right, so...
Anyone does a forens, if we're getting sued for some, or for a public, they can find a BCC.
Oh, no, the reason to do the BCC was just because it prevents you from replying all, like, if you are on...
But if, but if someone said we still violated, and they subpoenaed, though, I'm sure you could find that, right?
We definitely should check with Colby, and I, I mean, I think we answer the, the open meeting law stuff by putting in our packet as well.
Right.
Right, so the public is aware of it, it's not like it's hidden from anybody, it's just that we are knowing that an answer, and to Linda's earlier point, or Mr. Doctor's answer, we, we are aware in case we get hit up in a grocery store, or at the soccer field, or something else, and we can give the right answer.
I'm absolutely comfortable with it, I would just like to run it by Colby.
But it doesn't really need to go in the protocol, because that, this is...
That's on the blind copy?
Yeah, to ask Colby when we do those responses. And the reason to use, he's saying to use the BCC is because you cannot reply to the BCC, you can only reply to the sender, which would be the chair.
Okay.
So it would prevent that, that, I mean, we're not saying to use that to be untransparent to anyone, we're saying it because it prevents that OMO type violation.
Prevent mistakes.
Okay, so I recorded five, six changes, six changes that I can make to this, or Jean, we both have this document. But I can make those six changes, and then when we meet on August 1st, hopefully we can do that, it'll be good to go. What I would ask is, I won't be the chair, but on August 1st, hopefully we can do this.
Can I ask another question about it? So, under communication, in the first paragraph, we've discussed how the chair or their delegate are the only ones that have the authority to speak for the school committee. Do they have the authority to speak about anything as representing the school committee? Like, any, we're all individuals on the school committee, but this...
I think that means they have the authority to speak to something that we have discussed as a committee, right?
Right, that we have taken action on it.
But not if we haven't taken action on it.
Yeah, you can't say, "I've had the authority to speak as a school committee, this is my opinion," when you haven't discussed it as a committee.
And you can say, the committee, right.
That's my question.
Yeah, I don't think that's what that means.
You can only represent the committee action, or like, oh, the committee is meeting in next week, they didn't discuss it, it wasn't on the agenda, well, I mean, they're very factual about the meeting, a question about a meeting, what was discussed or not discussed, like, a topic level, but, and what we voted or agreed to, and typically, that's what's being asked, especially if you're at, like, a board meeting, or...
You can only speak for the committee on history, right?
Right.
Well, that's what I was...
Right?
Yeah, no, I agree.
Future agenda items, you could say.
I think sometimes, I'm trying to think of town meeting as one of the more public places where the chair speaks. I think sometimes the question might be, "Why was this decision made?" And the chair has to kind of summarize. Yeah, but that's, that's past action, yeah, yeah.
But it's history, right?
Yep, you're totally right, you're totally right.
What about other delegated authority to the chair? Right, did we, let's just backtrack two weeks, delegated authority about communication around John's leave of absence, right? That was at the end of the meeting, we didn't have a chance to discuss it. We didn't discuss it. You, you did what you had to do, I don't think anybody objects to what had to be done necessarily, but that was not something we discussed. It was something that had to be done, it had, had to be done in a certain period of time. How does, I'm not, there's nothing wrong with it, I just think it's, it kind of goes against that, these are things we've already discussed in conversations.
Except that it had already happened publicly, so whether it was discussed or not, it had happened, right?
His, his announcement had happened?
Yeah, I think he's referring to this, but the, the, except the chair has the responsibility to confer with the superintendent between meetings, right? So, this was after the meeting, and the superintendent was not here, the staff that the chair consulted with and conferred with is this staff right here, and Jen, to come up with the community communication. So, right, that memo wasn't approved by, that letter, which was created by that group and put out by me, was not approved by the committee. It was, that was an action in between the meetings.
So that, to me, is a perfect example of where the trust comes into play. It's an exceptional circumstance, a very exceptional circumstance, and there is no doubt that getting information out that was clear and consistent in a quick way from the school committee was the appropriate thing, and there is no realistic way to have that discussion, or to have that collaboration. So it's a fairly exceptional case, but I, to me, that one comes down to trust.
And I also said, if I'm right, it was prepared by you, school committee chair, but it didn't say it was a school committee.
That's true, it was from the chair of the committee, it was not from the committee, that's true.
It didn't say that you were speaking for the school committee, right?
I think you're right.
By expectation, chair is speaking for it. So, I mean, you could, you could, you know, play with the legalese of that a little bit, but, and I, again, I don't think anything was done wrong, I just think it's an interesting, based on that question, really, we hadn't discussed it. It was the right thing to do, and there is a bit of a delegation of authority from John down to the, the three of you, and therefore, that bridge had to be formed, was the right thing to do, I'm just, it just...
So the, the chair is the first among equals, right? So, the committee always has the opportunity and option to call the chair out for a decision they made, but there are going to be, there's always situations where something has to be done immediately, and, you know, someone might not agree with that decision, and, and they have every right to, to call that person out on it.
Or just ask for an explanation.
Yes, that's the way I look at it.
Bless you. Okay.
And that clarifies my question, that under normal circumstances, the chair can speak on historical discussions and decisions, but it's not making a decision and asserting a school committee viewpoint on something we haven't discussed, that's...
Right, and no member can do that as part of their roles as liaisons, or anything like that, but neither can the chair, as Chuck said, first among equals, it's the same.
And it was not a criticism?
No, no. That was all between Friday at 3:40 and Monday at 3:30. So, um, thank you. I think, so, I have the six changes, I will update that and send it to the appropriate person. So now, we are, we're actually at the point of our meeting, I just want to quickly go through, because I think it wouldn't be fair to do this, the calendar, so we have...
Thank you, Dorothy.
Oh, I think, are you going to stick around for a couple more minutes while we do our reorg?
I'll stick around for a couple more minutes, sure.
So the calendar is, we had Linda Engelson, Gail, Chris, and I worked to put some details around the agendas for, obviously, tonight, August 1st and the 29th, and also had Linda Engelson put in some of the dates of, like, the financial forums, the, when the finance committee and select board budget meetings are, finance committee, but the rest of the agenda really needs to now be, that's something that's going to have to be on a little bit of an accelerated path with the new chair, vice chair, and our leadership team here. And then, the liaison roles, I, I asked, we had Mrs. Engelson put them in the packet so people would know what they were, I would think this is something that we should, the chair and vice chair usually sort of take a stab at redoing that, it was like, one of the last, last memos in the package, and usually, they have discussions with people to say, "Are you interested in this, that, or the other thing?" I just want to say that I know Nick Bobbin was ready to come to the meeting tonight if, if he needed to, but he's willing to stay on audit, so that's something that we have to follow up on, he's definitely willing to do that, and there's a limited amount of us, so sometimes it's nice to have... So, we need to make sure the liaison roles are clear going forward.
Select board leads.
Good time of year to review them.
Okay.
I watch them on...
Watch them on YouTube, do a binge watch.
There you go.
Binge watch.
So, at this point in the agenda, what I'd like to do tonight, typically, I would hand the gavel to Dr. Doherty, but what we really need to do is have someone who can act as, I'm going to give up the gavel, and we'll need to have someone who can act as the temporary chair to just lead us through the election of a new chairperson. Then, once the chairperson is elected, the new chairperson will lead the, our committee through the election of the vice chair. And so, I've looked at the policy, actually sought some guidance from Dorothy, and what, and I, I also would like to say that I am not accepting any nominations for either chair or vice chair, and if I give up the gavel, I am the immediate past chair, and I think it would work for us tonight, in this somewhat exceptional circumstance, for me to be able to lead the committee. So if there's somebody who would be willing to make a motion, Mr. Parks?
I move to select Elaine Webb as chair during the election of the new chair.
Second. All those in favor? Oh, I don't know who calls that, but immediate past chair, okay.
So that's temporary, yep.
Okay. So, what we do here, so now I'm temporary chair, temporary, I'm immediate past chair and temporary chair at the same moment, and I will take nominations from the floor for our chairperson, Mr. Parks.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Robinson as chair.
Second, Mr. Wise, and are there other nominations? Then, seeing no other nominations, I'm going to call for a vote, all those in favor of Mr. Robinson, actually, I didn't ask if you accepted. Okay, he's done this before, he knows what he's getting into, okay, so all those in favor of Mr. Robinson accepting the responsibility and leading us as chair, raise your hand. And that's a unanimous vote, so...
One kind of reluctant hand raiser.
Very excited.
You were reluctant, she said, to raise your hand.
To hand the gavel to Mr. Robinson, who will now lead us in the vice chair nomination.
So, before I do that, thank you, and, you know, as I said, I think I just said a few minutes ago, you know, this, this is my view, always been my view, that's the first among equals, and, you know, I thought we had a lot of great discussion tonight about collaboration and working together, and, you know, this is just the start of what I think a lot of good things that we can do as, as a team together, always as a team. Having said that, I'll accept nominations for vice chair, Mr. Parks.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Barowski as vice chair.
I second that.
Are there any other nominations? There are none.
She won it?
Yes. Oh, sure looks good, thank you.
Okay, we're ready for a vote, all those in favor, Ms. Barowski for vice chair.
Can I ask...
Six, zero, congratulations.
You as well.
Mr. Robinson, you get to adjourn us.
May I, may I?
Can I ask a question before Mr. Presser leaves?
Yes.
Is it possible for us to get, for you to share that slideshow?
Yes, I will send it, I will send it to...
If you send it to one of us, Linda can distribute it.
Yep, I'll send it.
Excellent. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Dorothy, that was great, thank you very, very much.
Yes.
Oh, Dr. Doherty, typically, at the end of this reorg, thanks the chair and the vice chair for their service over the last year, so I wanted to express that to both of you, it's been a long year, and you've done an amazing job, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anything, a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second it.
All those in favor? Six, zero.